I'll open the City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 16th, 2018 at 5:01 PM. We will be going into closed session. Do we have any public comments on closed session items?
Or none. Would you like me to do roll call for you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Santos is absent. Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Laura?
Here.
Mayor Prota Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
Here.
And I have no requests for speakers.
Thank you. With that, I will close the, go to closed session now at 5:03. I'm sorry, did you, should you read it?
So the items, the items are item number two for closed session. It's conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation pursuant to government code section 5495-6.91. And that matter is AC Equipment versus City of Beaumont, case number RIC 171-4429. Item three, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 5495-6.92. That's Jessica Schurde versus City of Beaumont et al., case number RIC 170-5265. And item number four, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 5495-6.92 and/or three, and it's one potential case. That's it.
Thank you. My apologies.
Oh, no worries.
We will go to closed session at 5:04. 2018. Do we have a report out from closed session?
We do. The council met in closed session. Item number two, conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation pursuant to government code section 5495-6.91, AC Equipment versus City of Beaumont, case number RIC 171-4429. There was no reportable action taken. Item three, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 5495-6.92, Jessica Schurde versus City of Beaumont et al., case number RIC 170-5265. And there was reportable action taken on that item. There was a motion by Councilmember Laura to defend, take all action necessary to defend the city in the matter, and that was seconded by Mayor Carroll. And the vote was Councilmember Laura, yes. Mayor Carroll, yes. Councilmember White, yes. And Vice Mayor Martinez, yes. Item four, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 5495-6.92 or three, one potential case. There was no reportable action taken on that item.
Thank you. Do we have action on any requests for excused absence? We have Councilmember Santos, is he?
Yes, he is absent in a conference.
And he's attending a function?
Correct.
Correct? Okay, thank you. Pledge of allegiance, please. Vice Mayor Martinez, would you give us a pledge of allegiance? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicole, would you do a roll call for this session?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Santos is absent. Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Laura?
Here.
Mayor Prota Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
Here.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Any requests for adjustment? No? Thank you. Conflict of interests, do we have any conflict of interest disclosures? Thank you. Announcement and recognitions, proclamations and correspondence. Our first item is police officer introduction. Chief DeLees.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick introduction. This is Officer Maggie Rollings. Officer Rollings had a passion for law enforcement. She developed her senior year in high school. She graduated from Ukaypa High School. She rolled in San Diego Valley College to continue her education, became a certified medical assistant, which is always helpful to have that type of training in the field. Later, she was hired by the Upland Police Department and sponsored to go to attend the San Diego County Sheriff's Academy. After those grueling six months, she started her FTO program. She decided to leave that position for a different type of opportunity. She was volunteering at the San Diego County Coroner's Office assisting with death investigations, which is obviously a very helpful trait to have as well, you know, in this line of work. She's continued to work on her bachelor's degrees, but, you know, that, that bug in her, that fire of getting back into municipal policing ignited, and she reached out when she saw that we were hiring. She was selected as a top candidate, and we swore her in on January 2nd of 2018. She's very excited to be part of the Beaumont family, so I present Officer Maggie Rollings to you. Would you like some? (applause). I didn't tell her about this part.
I did not.[411.11][411.11](laughter). It's nice to meet you all, and I am very happy to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Our second item is building and safety planning, community development department presentation by staff Rebecca Deming. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. This is our continued presentations of the departments here at City Hall to introduce the public and council to our staff here. This is our org chart. I'm the Community Development Director. I manage the Building and Safety Division, Planning Division, Fire Prevention, GIS and CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grants, and GIS is Geographics Information Systems. Our Building and Safety Department, as it says on our website, I'll go ahead and read it, "is dedicated to providing the highest level of inspection services and plan review while providing personable service in the spirit of cooperation with the building community, fairness, equality, and the highest standard of professional ethics. Our goal's in providing our services while enforcing state construction laws and local ordinances that protect our citizens." Got a few pictures of some of our tract homes going up here in the city. And here's my staff within the Building and Safety Department. We have Keith Hightower, who is our Building Official, which you guys have all met, as he comes here to present some of the ordinances. Shane is one of our, is our permit tech that you will find at our counter if you were to come in to try and pull a permit. And then our two inspectors that are on city employees are Mike and Jose, and you'll find them out in the field during normal business hours, but come back, are here early in the morning and at the end of the day in order to finish up their paperwork. And I kind of put a placeholder here because we do have on-call contracts for both, for inspection services and permit techs, so there are other faces out there. So if the public, you know, just because someone else might show up at their door, they may be an official representative of the city doing inspections. There, I just don't have their picture because it could change. But these are our city employees here in the Building and Safety Department. We keep this chart up to date every month. We put it on our website for anyone who's interested. It gives you the stats for how many total permits are issued, all, that's, that's every kind of permit. That's a TI or a tenant improvement in commercial, that's a new home, that's a remodel, a re-roof, a change out of an eight, of a air conditioning system. So our totals go there. We also put how many we've finalized and how many single-family homes we've issued, as well as single-family finals. And then the commercials are separated as well, but they're all bundled into that total number. So you can't add every column, that total is added everything together already for you. Our biggest numbers are off this chart, which was in 2005. 2006 is when we had our, the big surge, but we've, we keep this up to the last 10 years. So we'll drop off 2007 in this upcoming year and just show 2008 through 2018 as we start our numbers in January. Planning Department, I don't have any pictures to show you other than me, as that is our staff right now. We have open positions for a senior planner currently, and so we're hoping to fill that. We do, you know, both current and advanced planning, or I do both current and advanced planning. You know, current planning deals with all the applications coming in, you know, any new business. Kyle helps me out with that right now, but home occupation permit, an addition to a home, all those things are reviewed for setbacks and are chapter 17 codes. We also do advanced planning. The biggest project right now is our general plan update. Advanced planning is basically, you know, bigger plans for the future, not just current applications. We make sure the fee update that went through and the ordinance updates as needed are, fall in the category of advanced planning. As I mentioned, our biggest project right now is our general plan update, so I want to remind everyone, we have a website to go to, elevatebeaumont.com. It keeps you up to date. If you sign up for our mailing list there, you get our newsletters, surveys, and all the information of upcoming meetings and whatnot, so I want to encourage everyone to make sure you've signed up in there. And our newest newsletter will be going out this week. We're giving information on this current survey that's out. We are also sending that out through social media today and tomorrow and this week. I've got Ashley trying to get that current survey out, so everyone who gets it, feel free to forward it to as many of people as you can, because the more input, the better. We are closing that survey on January 28th so that we can bring that, those responses back to you on our February 6th workshop. And so we've advertised that. We mailed out today all of the notices that were discussed at our last meeting to all the people in the sphere and the areas of change. Fire prevention is a contract department, but I included his picture. Richard Horner is our person that goes out there to do all annual business inspections as well as fire, fire suppression systems. He does those plan checks and inspections.
Commercial and residential?
Community development block grant funds, we manage that. We do applications, you see them every, around September is when we put the notice out and we bring it back to council for applicants to apply and use the funds. Majority of our funds go to road improvements. We're working on our latest bid document with the Public Works Department to spend the rest of our money, and you should be seeing that soon. And lastly is our GIS systems. We keep two separate GIS webpages on our website. One is for the Public Works Department and one is for the Planning Department. The Planning Department, you'll find information such as zoning and whatnot, but the bigger one is our GIS system for Public Works. It has all of our sewer systems, but it also keeps all of the improvement plans. So you can go up into the corner, into this little search function, and search for your plans. So if you were curious where your property lines are and you live in a newer area, we have your precise grade plans scanned in, and you can actually go and download those. That's not for infill lots or, and it's not for older homes, but once we started doing the tracts, we've, we've kept track of them and have them scanned into the system. So we do use that a lot when people come in and are looking at putting fencing or whatnot, and they want to see exactly where their house is supposed to be compared to the property line. We can pull up precise grade plans through our system. You can pull up street improvements, so people who are developers who are wanting to continue the street or the sewer, they can pull up those street improvement plans from the last, where it ended, or from the last group that did it if they're looking at continuing it. So it saves us time from having to pull the original MYLARS because they're all scanned in and available. Sometimes they need our help to search for them, but once we have that number, it's really easy to search and download. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Question?
Yeah, I have a quick question regarding the GIS system. We could connect to the county and get parcel information and that kind of information?
We do download, the parcel-based information on the system is from the county's.
Okay, so it is available for people who want to go and look at their own, but it doesn't have recording doc, recorded documents, correct?
No, it'll only have a link to the map that's on, that's scanned in to, at the county. So it'll, if it's a newer area, you'll be able to pull up the subdivision map or the assessor's parcel map.
Okay.
Those are the only two things you can pull up. Any recorded documents, you actually have to go on the county's website and pay for to review, so it's not something that's available to everyone.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Rebecca, do you just scan the, the precise grading plans or do you also scan floor plans?
We do not scan the building department plans because they are covered under the architect's copyright, so we, we don't scan those separately.
Okay. I think you've done an excellent job by yourself on the person show. Thank you.
And when you scan, do you, and somebody's doing an addition or improvement, that gets scanned also?
No, any building department documents, so if you submit to the building department, that does not get scanned.
Okay.
Under, I believe the building code, Keith might be able to correct me, those are copyright protected.
All right.
Planning documents and public works documents are public records, and we're able to make those available to the public, however, the building plans are not. People can come in and review them, but they can't take copies. So we can't put them up there because then people could just print them out or, or make their own copies.
All right, thank you.
And how new is new on the tract? Do they go 2000 or?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's all our tracts.
All the track, okay.
So it goes back to Three Rings Ranch, our first real tract subdivision.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, our city manager, Mr. Parton, you're doing a recognition?
School Choice Week proclamation?
Oh, that one's before, sorry. Thank you. The, do we have anything other than me talking about the proclamation and reading it? Is that all that we have for this?
Just the proclamation.
We don't have anybody here? Do we have?
No, we don't. They asked that we mail that to them.
Okay, thank you. All right. This is a proclamation for School Choice Week. I will read the proclamation. Whereas all children in Beaumont should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Beaumont recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Beaumont, and whereas Beaumont is home to a multitude of excellent educational options from which parents can choose for their children, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas our area has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby recognize January 21st through the 27th of 2018 as School Choice Week, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Now you run.
Oh, thank you. Question, White?
Okay. It's really humbling to really be here and to be able to present this, but one thing, I'm not sure a lot of our community knows this, but we are structured in a way that City Council amongst its peers selects mayor every single year. And so it's an extremely vital role within our community. People look to the mayoral position for leadership as an official representative or spokesperson for the community and the key things that are happening within our community. And it's vital in terms of reaching out to other agencies and negotiating and really kind of helping to progress the City Council's goals and objectives. It's been my pleasure the last year to be able to work with Lloyd Wyatt as our mayor. And we were really looking at this, and I spoke with Councilmember Laura, really about establishing a new tradition for our community, and that is that we recognize our mayors now as we end a year and we head into our new transition, because it's such a critical role. It takes a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of effort to assume that role and that leadership responsibility. In this last year, it's been very challenging. There's a lot of successes and a lot of things that have been accomplished for the community. We've negotiated major settlement agreements. We have established expectations and protocols strategically for the city moving forward into new arenas, station new bullet, budgets, new financial policies. There's, there's an amazing amount of things that have happened, and Mayor Wyatt had been there to shepherd us and take us through and provide leadership that we needed to get us through a lot of those things. We spent a lot of hours, you know, on the weekends, at nights, as well as council meetings discussing and working through those things. So it's my honor to be able to present you with this honorary gavel as former mayor of Beaumont.[1255.33][1255.33](applause).
As usual, I'm at a loss for words, so I want to thank you. Thanks.[1268.33][1268.33](applause).
Well done. Public comment period. This is for items not on the agenda. Any one person may address the City Council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There is a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. I'd like to open the public comment period. Do we have public comments?
We do.
Speakers? Okay. I will open it at 6:20.
First speaker is Anita Worthing. Mayor, council, everyone, again, my voice is back to normal. Through with that crowd. Yay![1348.43][1348.43](applause). Well, this is the last time I'm here to talk about our upcoming Veterans Military Family and Friend Expo that will be on next Saturday, the 27th of January, here. I thank the city for helping us with this and allowing this to happen. I was at the VA Loma Linda today, and they are so excited because they'll be able to actually get in here and actually get with people and enroll them into my healthy veterans, my healthy vet, my healthy veterans and eligibility. Also, we will have a lot of just social interaction in the other room because a lot of people want to talk about experiences, and I think this is very important for us here. So not only that, I received a call from the Border Patrol, again, they want to come, and they, they are hiring. One of our committee members on the Vet Expo Committee is Paula Brago, who is Riverside County Sheriff, and on the way over here, I heard a radio announcement because they are hiring for all positions. I stopped by today because I got a call from the railroad again. They are actively seeking help, not only for conductors, but electricians, everybody. We generally have this as informational, but because there are a lot of people, and remember, this is for the public, and because so many of us are tuned to what's going on, there's a lot of people that needs jobs, so we decided to also open it up to a selective amount of employers. So we encourage everyone to tell everyone to come. Ben from the Sand Trap is going to have tremendous amount of hot dogs. If everybody, please come out and eat some hot dogs. Albertson has been very nice in supporting us and giving us things, as well as Pericone. So we encourage everybody, 10 o'clock in the morning to 1 o'clock. So expect to see all of your faces here. Thank you.[1486.21][1486.21](applause). Next speaker is Linda Kimball.
Good evening. Okay, Linda Kimball, I live at 1420 Yarrow Lane. My, I have three questions that I, for the record, that's why I'm here, is on the sewer proposition, are we as citizens voting for it? And can the citizens turn in a handwritten letter stating no with their parcel number, their name, their address, without signing it? Or do they have to sign it? Does it have to be notarized? Can it be hand-delivered by, personally by them or like me? And my last one is, are the Melrose paying for the infrastructure bonds or are they paying for items other than infrastructure bonds? I'm just curious about those Melrose still. It just bothers me, but this year, we're voting for council. And that's it, thank you. 9:53, that's good.
Can we make sure her questions are just followed through and she gets the answers? Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Tracy Mahoney.
My name is Tracy Mahoney, and I live on Oak Valley Parkway. I know that the former Beaumont Seven were responsible for a lot of the irresponsible planning of the city, but I would like to know who in the world came up with the idea of making Oak Valley Parkway a two-lane highway each way without giving consideration to the homes already on the street and without notifying us or asking us current homeowners who live on the street what could be done to help ease the traffic before you made the mistake of adding two extra lanes? Your lack of forethought has put me, my neighbors, my friends, and family at risk. I now have a greater chance of being rear-ended getting into my own driveway than previously when the street was one lane each way and people could go around me as I pulled into my driveway. I have nowhere for my family to park. My driveway only holds two cars, and now with the second lane added, there is no room for any cars to park on the street. If you also add a bike lane, which is proposed, then the City Council has just lowered the value of my property along with my neighbors, and I'm wondering if legally there is enough room for the extra lanes that you put in. If anything, the concrete median should have been removed, then you could have moved the lanes north two to three feet and not place a bike lane on the south side, and then we would have safety for ourselves. The person who planned this was not thinking at all. There is no complete sidewalk on the south side of the street, and now with the new second lane, when I walk, when I want to walk down to Palm Avenue, I am literally risking my life. There is nowhere to walk on the south side to get from Oak Valley to Stater Brothers Plaza, and now the speeding cars are right next to the gutter. I know that only an older home, one that was built in 1989, does not pay as much taxes as the newer party homes that pay all the Melrose taxes, but I am still a Beaumont resident who pays taxes, and I expect to be heard by the City Council that I helped vote into office. Now, since there are two lanes each way, people driving down Oak Valley thinks it's the Autobahn, and they fly down this street. You, the City Council, who did not plan accordingly for me and my neighbor's safety, need to come up with a better plan to fix our unsafe street. I know you've put the two extra lanes in to deal with the traffic from all the new development, but why should my safety be comprised for the new developments? I ask you, before one of my neighbors, family, or myself get injured or killed because of your poor planning, to change or adjust the two added lanes on Oak Valley Parkway. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker is Susan Wilson.
Susan Wilson, just a small thing I've noticed when we were eating at McDonald's the other day, I don't know what, if anything, can be done about this. There's a lot of trash in the field opposite Kohl's, and we have a beautiful city. It's going to be better if the trash is picked up. It's going to be better if the trash is picked up. Any solution to that? I don't know if we have already a trash pickup for fields. It may be something to think about because people driving into our area look at the wonderful mountains. It's a beautiful place. We need to have a mission statement. Beautify Beaumont. Because I think people would be attracted, and it's saleable if it looks clean. That was, I'd love to offer, but my husband said I couldn't.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
My wife and I were having the exact same discussion at McDonald's on Sunday. And so maybe, Mr. Pardon, you could explain the responsibility of the property owners for cleaning that up and what we do to motivate them to clean that up. I appreciate that.
The, you know, the debris on some of these empty fields is always a difficult issue to address because a lot of these are absentee homeowner or property owners. And so with the winds, with the things that blow through, unfortunately, series catch some of the debris that's out there. You know, what we do a lot of times when there's a hazardous or dirty situation on a piece of property is we do have the ability to go in through code enforcement, force the property to be cleaned up and place lanes on the property for the cost it took to do that. Be difficult to do that, you know, on these kinds of open field areas that are there. So one of the things that we've been talking about at a staff level is really trying to develop some programming and some effort to try to encourage cleanup throughout the community, whether there are neighborhood cleanups. But those situations are going to be difficult situations to do moving on to the future.
I wasn't sure about the legal side of it, to be honest, going into a field and whose property is it?
Well, the issue is, in terms of getting onto the field for the purpose of code enforcement or cleanup, you know, there's a process you go by to get there. You provide notice, there's follow-up. If there's non-activity by the landowner, then at a certain point, we have the ability to declare nuisance and go into the property. If we go through that process, and it's extremely costly and time-sensitive to do that, if we do that for a piece of property that's got loose debris on it, you know, trash being blown into the property, it's very costly and inefficient to do that. So we really have to try to appeal to the landowner to address that. Police does manage that, and they do try to reach out to property owners and say, hey, there's been complaints, and ask them to try to take steps to mitigate that. But again, in terms of hiring a contractor or sending city crews out to try to clean up trash off that property. Now, it'd be a different story if there was tall weeds and there was vermin, there were fire hazards, those types of things. You know, that's something we can get in and address, but when it's loose trash and debris, that is an issue that we really, really need the landowners to step up and really do the right thing to manage that property.
Thank you. No other speakers.
You can close the public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment period at 6:34. The consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion here or at the end of action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolutions are to be read by title only. Do we have a request for any items to be pulled? Do I have a motion?
There's no public comment on yet.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve items five through, oops, five through...
Eighteen.
Sorry, eighteen, on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the successor agency at 6:35 PM. Item nineteen.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and, oh, I'm going to fix this. This is never going to work. There we go, that's better. Thank you, Chairwoman and successor agency members. So tonight, in front of you, is another recognized obligation payment schedule. And I don't know if we need to go into the history of why we're here and what happened to the redevelopment agencies. Either way, the successor agency approves these obligation schedules now, once a year, originally once every six months. And what that does is it provides the state of California an idea of what obligations are still owed to different payees as a result of the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies within the state of California. So we didn't do one last year because we didn't have any obligations that we had solid information on. The year prior, the city did place the city loan of around $19.5 million on the obligation schedule, and that was denied by the state of California. So staff went back to the drawing board, and we looked up actual invoices and contracts spent pursuant to the RDA activities, and we basically forewent the administration expenses that totaled, I think it was somewhere around eight million or something like that, off the top of my head. So the idea is now we're looking to do another obligation schedule for the upcoming 1819 fiscal year. The deadline for that schedule to be submitted to the Department of Finance is February 1st of every year. Conveniently, the state of California gives us our final template somewhere in the middle of December, so you have to compile all your information, put it on the forms, get it publicly noticed and everything, get it to city council, and then following that, the actual oversight board needs to approve it. So the oversight board meeting is scheduled for next Monday at 9:00 AM in the morning. So what we have tonight is the actual resolution to approve the recognized obligation payment schedule for 1819. And working with some of the things we've done in the past year that the city manager was talking about, the mayor, and what he basically managed and oversaw, as well as the rest of council, was a couple investigations, as well as other interested parties from the state. And one of those was the state comptroller's office, and they did an asset review of the city of Beaumont. And by the end of it, they said, well, you need to pay us $4.2 million of money that was transferred pursuant to the master loan agreement. And the city fought back and said, you know what? This was done on the master loan agreement. This should still be recognized under the state law, even though the successor agency is still in ownership. We were owed this money, and we used legal defense that's referenced in here based on Health and Code Section 34171D2, and that states that master loan agreements that are entered within two years of the formation of an RDA are legitimate loans. And why the state of California dismantled RDAs, what they didn't want to do was create financial hardships for cities. But they didn't want to allow loan agreements that happened the 24th hour, right before the legislation was passed, because some cities knew the legislation was going to pass. They knew RDAs were going to be dissolved, and they went out on a fire sale and started taking out loans from banks, right before it was dissolved. And the state of California said, well, that didn't meet the intent of the law. We're not going to recognize your $100 million loan that happened right before the statute was approved. So they did write in law that said if it was at the beginning of your RDA and you took out a loan, which all RDAs had to do, because to get tax increment financing, you actually had to be in debt at the establishment of your redevelopment agency. So there was three funding sources that I was aware of, and I am aware of, that agencies went through. They either borrowed from a bond, they borrowed from a bank, or they borrowed from the city. And there's no rhyme or reason on why each agency did that. Our city decided to borrow from, or the agency decided to borrow from the city, as opposed to going out and getting a loan from a bonding company or from a bank. So what we are left with today is a fun process of saying, hey, we spent $11.2 million on projects within the redevelopment area. The redevelopment agency was dissolved prior to actually paying the city back, like they paid back the 4.2. So we're out $11.2 million still, and we, as staff and the city and the community, feel that that loan should be honored and that the state of California should, in essence, pay us back for the money the city loaned the redevelopment agency for the projects identified within the staff report. And those projects include the Antique Lighting District project. So we went through the contracts and the change orders, and to date, staff has identified around $3.3 million on actual invoices paid for the improvements related to that project. So that's what is going to be included on the payment schedule. Another one, sports park improvements, Stewart Park improvements, rehabilitation of streets pursuant to the capital improvement plans that were done by the redevelopment agency and the city during those years. And a lot of those projects, as you know, carry over from year to year. But there was major rehab projects down on Pennsylvania, as well as Palm. And ultimately, when you add all those projects up, you come out with $11.2 roughly million dollars of money that we believe is owed. So step one is getting this recognized obligation payment schedule approved at the successor agency level. Then we move on to the oversight board on Monday. And then, once that's done, we'll submit everything to the state of California and the county by the deadline, and then that's where the real work will happen. And if you decided to read through everything, I applaud you because it was over, I think, a ream and a half of paper. Our guess is that the state of California is going to ask for more information, and we will be happy to give that to them. We didn't want to give everything to you, so the agenda packet would be at all-time historic high. So we have backup information, we have invoices, all of that fun stuff at finance level. This is kind of the contracts and change orders and some other particulars that I felt was important for tonight's conversation, as well as Monday. So that's really everything I have for you on this. The fiscal impact is that the successor agency is legally required to continue to make payments due to enforceable obligations, and that successor agency's oversight board approval will ensure that those obligations are continued to be paid. This scenario, the successor agency owes the city money. So if it was a bank, we'd be asking for the successor agency to submit this so that we would get monies to then pay the bank for the loan. The only difference is now the city of Beaumont's actually the lender, and the successor agency is the one that owes the money back. So this ROPS does include an enforceable obligation for the repayment of that city-to-agency loan in the amount of $11,209,70 pursuant to the master loan agreement that was approved within two years of the establishment of the redevelopment agency. And staff does recommend that the city council, acting as the successor agency, approve the proposed resolution approving the recognized obligation payment schedule for fiscal year 201819. And I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have public comment?
No.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Just a brief one. Kyle, so what's the plan, then, from the direction of the agency? Will you need approval after oversight before you go to the state? Or is this already kind of all, you're giving us a heads up of what you're going to do?
So the plan is here at successor agency, oversight board for approval on Monday, and then there's no additional approvals needed to submit. So then we submit to the Department of Finance, and I envision either in-person meetings, conference calls, or both to basically solve the issue if they need additional information.
And then updates to the agency?
We provide updates to the city council and successor agency as soon as we know what's going on at the state level. If they say A-OK, they'll do so in a letter format, and it'll say this is approved, and then we work through the financing on how much of that we can be repaid within this year or next year, however long it's going to take.
Councilmember White?
Thank you, Kyle. Last time we addressed this was the $20,019 whatever, and the minute we approved it, word went out that the city's getting $20 million. And I understand how the process works, and I know that after tonight, there will be $11 million coming back. So if you could help me walk through some of this, I would appreciate that. So on the $20 million, we approved sending the application to the state to be reimbursed for the, for the agency to reimburse the city $20 million, and that was denied.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Before all of that, we had, we were already paying the state for about $3 million that, I think, two or three million that was unallowed, and we're making that payment at $250,000, $300,000 a year, something around there.
Exactly.
Are we still making those payments?
We are. So what happened was when the state of California said freeze, which was exactly when the law was approved, and they said, you're freezing on February 1st of 2012. And that meant freeze your assets. Do not spend any RDA dollars, do not sell any RDA properties, do not get new loans, those types of things. The loans I was talking about, people knew what was going to happen, so they did it before. So our previous administration spent $2.8 million after the freeze period.
Okay.
So the state found that in their audits and their review of our finances for the RDA, and they said, will you owe us this money? And we said, yeah, you do. So we hashed out, we didn't have $2.8 million, so we hashed out an approved payment schedule with the state of California that's about $300,000 per year until we pay that back.
Okay. So just, again, the confusion with agency-city money being paid back. The agency, in order to pay back, let's say, I'll jump ahead and then come back, but in order to pay back this $11 million to the city, the agency pays it back. But where does the agency get their money?
From the state of California on these schedules. So what happens is you submit these schedules. We've had a couple obligations to other people, like the school district. So then the state goes through this waterfall of when they, when they take the property taxes from their redevelopment areas. And they do this in every city in California. So they take the tax increment of that property area, and that's a dollar amount. And then they take the pass-throughs for each of the taxing entities within that jurisdiction, and they pass through money to them. The actual county does that now versus what the RDA was doing. So then that's left with the smaller amount of money after all the pass-throughs.
Okay. So the $11 million would be coming, the state would tell the county, we authorize $11 million or whatever's approved on the ROPS to go back to the agency.
But at the end of the waterfall, so then they get, so pass-pass-throughs, they go to ROPS obligations, that's when we would be paid.
Okay.
And then after that, if there's no obligations, it goes down to normal property tax.
Okay. So it's actually coming out of property tax that we're already paying?
That...
Correct?
The areas, yeah, the residents are paying, it just goes into another pool?
Okay.
And then that pool is...
No one's taxes are being raised?
Not at all.
Okay. Now, the 4.2 million you said was returned to the city, it wasn't actually 4.2 million in cash returned to the city, it was, we were just no longer required to pay the 4.2 million?
So the 4.2 was transferred during that freeze period to the city to make interest payments on the loan amount. So the state comptroller's office identified that in their asset review and said, well, you transferred this money pursuant to the loan when you shouldn't have transferred the money. And our legal argument was it's a legitimate loan pursuant to the Health and Safety Code. We were simply making payments to the lender, just like every other lender that's getting paid at the same time, whether it was a bank. So if we got it from Wells Fargo, then we would have had to have paid Wells Fargo, or else we would have been in default of our loan.
So when we made our argument that the 4.2 million we don't owe you, and they agreed that we don't owe them, what it meant was we were not going to have to, in the future, pay another $200,000, $300,000 a year.
Exactly.
So it's not like we saved $4 million and our general fund went up $4 million, correct?
No, we just saved on, like, Malana's balance sheet, a liability of $4.2 million of having to come up with a financing stream to pay that back to the state of California.
Okay. And this ROPS that we're, you're asking us to approve tonight, is going to the state and saying, we believe there's another $11.2 million that should be allowable, and the state could come back and say, none of that's allowable.
They can say...
Or a portion of it's allowable.
They could say it's all.
Give us more information.
Yep.
Okay. So we're not approving $11.2 million coming... So we're not approving 11.2 million coming to the city tonight?
By no means is this a guarantee.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make that clear because we will, we will get those kinds of comments in, um, in the weeks going forward.
I wish it was a guarantee, but it is not.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. You're welcome. And, uh, when this, if this 11 million, um, if any portion of it is approved, um, then it will come in some sort of stabilized small increments. They're not going to write us a check for 7 million or whatever it is that they agree to of the 11 million.
That is correct. Currently, how the law is written, it's going to come very small increments over probably a long period of time, unless they change it and they want, I don't see why the state would change it, but there's always the potential of them changing it with a cleanup bill and, and paying it back faster. I'd like to take whatever they approve and wash out our remaining balance on what's owed to them.
Mm-hmm.
But that's a discussion for another day.
Thank you. Do I have, um, so the, um, staff recommendation is to approve the proposed recognized obligation payment schedule for fiscal year 2018-19. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Board member White?
Yes.
Board member Laura?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martinez?
Yes.
And Chair Carol?
So I will adjourn the meeting of the successor agency at 6:50 PM. Action items, public hearing requests, approval of all ordinances and resolutions to be read by title only, item 20. Resolution of authorization for the execution of the certifications and assurances for the California State of Good Repair Program.
Good evening, mayor and council, and happy new year. The city of Beaumont is eligible for SB 1, Senate Bill 1, State of Good Repair Funds for this current fiscal year, and we are eligible for $66,478. We, staff is proposing that we use those monies to demolish a portion of the 550 California Vehicle Maintenance Yard. As you all know, that yard is very dilapidated, and these grant monies would be used to install, take out portions of the wall, and then install a metal cover. Right now, our mechanics work out in the elements, so when it's very warm outside, when it's raining, things like that, the buses, because the garage is so old, the buses can't fit into the garages. And so they have to work outside on all vehicles. We're proposing to, um, install these, um, unreinforced mason, I'm sorry, remove the existing unreinforced masonry carpets and install a metal cover so that they can work underneath and get more work done, frankly. So we are asking that you give us permission, you authorize the resolution, and then you give us permission to sign the grant assurances and, um, make the authorized agent signature authority in the amount of $66,478.
Thank you. Do we have public comment? Questions from council?
I have moved to approve by substitution of title-only resolution of authorization for the execution of certification and assurance of the California State of Good Repair Program, and to authorize staff to execute and submit all required accompanying documents listed above to complete the application for the grant funds.
I'll forward...
Any question?
You didn't speak up fast enough.
I know. I was too slow on the draw. I apologize. Just, I have just a couple of quick questions. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
I think, first, I think removal of the unreinforced masonry buildings is, has been long overdue, so I'm glad you're doing that. Second, though, on the, on the covers, are they going to be constructed such that at some point they can also be enclosed?
No. And the reason being is because we work on CNG buses.
Okay.
We have to have it open.
Okay.
Even if you had a ventilation type of system installed or...
Uh, my goal is to have a new facility by then.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go ahead.
Okay. I'll do a roll call. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yes. Thank you. Item 21, approval of amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated for design services for the Pennsylvania Avenue Widening Project. Staff report?
Hello, mayor, council members. This is an amendment to the professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. They are the consultant, they're doing the design work for widening of Pennsylvania Avenue from Sixth Street to First Street. The original contract was for 279,889. As we were, um, working through the preliminary design, we realized that we do need additional work on the intersection of Sixth and Pennsylvania. There's, there's quite a bit of traffic that will be coming off, and we are doing improvements of interchange there as well. Because of that, we think that we need additional widening, so we're looking at ultimate widening of that intersection. We believe that it's going to be two right turn, two left turn lanes going northbound. Uh, some of that was not anticipated in the original contract. The other, uh, issue was that there were, um, equipment on the railroad crossing that we wanted to keep in place and use some of that, and as going through the process with the, with the, with the railroad, we don't think we can keep all of the equipment that's there. We're going to have to design new equipment. So those two issues required us to amend the contract with Kim Lee Horn. So what's in front of you is a cost of 83,425 to cover additional costs that they, they will be incurring. Um, the design is 65% complete. I mean, it's ready, we're, it's the first submittal, we're looking at it, we're reviewing the, the, the submittals. Uh, we believe this project will be completed, the design will be completed next four, three to four months, and we expect, uh, to get approvals from the railroad within eight to nine months or a year and get this project out to bed early next year. That, that's my staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have public comment?
No speakers.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Hey, is this the first, um, revision to this contract? I thought we just did one. Or do I have it mixed up with another one?
Uh, this is the first revision to the contract.
That's right. Councilmember Martinez?
I just need to know, I thought this was a great separation for the railroad.
There, there are three projects at that location. Um, there is a grade separation that, that we have not awarded yet. There is an interchange design, Kim Lee Horn is also doing that work. And then there is widening of the roadway itself. Uh, because of the type of funding that's being used, and because of processes that are involved with getting rules, we broke them up into three projects, and, and also to expedite this one. So what you're looking at is, uh, just the project that's widening the roadway from Sixth, Sixth Street to First Street on Pennsylvania Avenue. Grade separation is a separate project.
But this is requiring crossing gates, though, to upgrade it, so...
The, those are at-grade crossings. So grade separation would be building the roadway to go under. This is just interim until we get the grade separation. We have signal at the, at the, the at-grade crossing.
And eventually, they're going to go away if you have the separation.
Yeah, that is...
Okay. That's...
Mayor?
Yes?
Um, was the, the widening is going to take place before the on and off ramps are added? Or what, what's the order of business there?
This is much faster for us to process and get approved. The other, the interchange itself has to be approved by Caltrans, takes a little longer. There are other design requirements that we need to meet, so it's a little longer process. The other thing is, uh, to, to build the ramps, this has to be in place or be done concurrently. So it'll be much...
The widening will happen before you build the ramps.
Yeah, that's our expectation. Yeah, and also the, the, another part we're looking at is tying this into Second Street. The, the improvements into Second Street and then opening it all the way to...
Okay. And, um, was there a, um, contingency amount in the original contract for this?
There wasn't, uh, any contingency. This is, normally we ask for contingency in construction contracts. I will, I don't believe we ask...
Not in design?
No, yeah, not in design.
Okay. All right, thank you.
One question. We're not, this isn't one of the railroad crossings we're redoing in the quiet zone, is it?
It, that, this is not one of the crossings, yeah.
No more questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the attached amendment with Kim Lee Horn Associates Incorporated for Pennsylvania Avenue Widening Project with an amount not to exceed 83,425 for a total not to exceed amount of 363,314.
I'll second that.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yes. Item 22, financial report from month and year to date, November 2017. Melana?
Good evening, mayor and council. I have provided to you the financial reports that council has requested. These are for the one month and the year-to-date for November 2017. I have the general fund, and I have the wastewater fund reports for you. This is the first of the now consistently reporting that will occur on a monthly basis. So what you have is comparing this one month and year-to-date to the budget for this year, and then also this month, this year to this month last year, and the year-to-date this year against the year-to-date in the prior year. So I was hoping if you had any questions, I could answer them. And, uh, the finance committee did review each of these documents at their meeting last week, and they had no additional questions or edits that needed to be made before we presented them to you this evening.
Do we have public comments on that?
No requests.
Thank you. Council questions? Councilmember White?
Um, okay, so, um, I'm looking at the first report, which is the general fund. And I understand that this is through November, so that's about, what, five months of the fiscal year?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, and I understand how revenue does not come in in a regular amount over the, over the year. So I'm not real concerned about those numbers, but as far as expenses, I see in the personnel expenses that it goes up 60, uh, well, 67%. Um, what am I seeing here?
You have 67% of the budget still remaining. Yes.
Okay. And then, um, I had a question on another, um, on the second report, if, if you want to take a look at that one.
Yes.
Um... And I think it's just for me to get a better understanding of, um, accounting practices. Um, my notes here say favorable versus non-favorable, um, fund transfers, where is that?
Transfers is the next to last line of the report.
Okay, so I think here's what I'm asking you. Let's go to the year-to-date variance in the second to last paragraph. When you have a favorable, what is that telling me? First of all, favorable is in black, correct?
Yes, favorable is in black, and generally that means that it's having a positive effect on your budget to actual. So you've either saved money, or, you know, have not spent money that was budgeted, or you've received more in revenue than you budgeted. It has a positive influence on the result, financial results.
So the favorable and non-favor, or unfavorable do not apply? Well, maybe the, the column third, is that a favorable versus unfavorable compared to year-to-date last year? Is that what that's telling me? Or is it still what you're saying?
Yes. It means that it's... In the revenues, it looks like I have them backwards.
I think that's where I was getting...
Yeah. So I think that favorable and unfavorable in November activity, they're reversed on the revenues.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's where I was getting...
Yes.
Sort of lost. So, so to fix that, what do you do? Is this a software program problem?
It's, it's a formula that needs to be fixed in the background, so...
And you're, you, um, establish, or you create the formulas?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so then on this same report, there, in, um, I believe it was 1617, there were fund transfers of, uh, 5 million dollars, and in 1718, there are no fund transfers. Can you sort of speak to that?
Um, in 1718, we have not recorded any fund transfers as yet. We're going to be looking at those as part of the mid-year adjustments. We have budgeted for them.
Okay.
But we haven't recorded them yet. And the November 2016, 5,69,000, that had to do with the, uh, advance of funds to the wastewater fund that was repaid, and then those future facilities monies were then reallocated back to the general fund. So that was a transfer into the general fund that happened as a one-time in November of 2016.
And that was when we, um, the prior administration, um, and, um, first month on council for me, um, used CFD funds to pay off a sewer bond.
Correct.
And then we used sewer funds to reimburse the CFD funds so that the bond was actually paid off with sewer, uh, uh, fund money, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And that was not, uh, bond debt service assessments. That was future facility assessments.
Okay.
That are available for various uses, and that's when we were given the, um, legal opinion that those funds could also been, be then reallocated, um, on a one-time basis to the general fund.
Okay. Um, uh, report number three.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know, I can't tell from this, this is just revenues and expenses, so I don't know from this report what the current fund balance in the wastewater treatment funds, correct?
Correct. Now, this is only the fiscal activities, revenues and expenses. So the balance sheet then would show the equity or, or the fund balance then that remains and cash balances that are held by the wastewater fund.
Okay.
And that can be presented with the mid-year.
Okay. Um, if you, if you're uncomfortable answering this, um, I understand, but just top of the head, can you give me an idea what the wastewater fund balance is now? Is it hundreds of thousands? Is it...
I believe it's about 2 million, maybe 3 million. I know that not all of the transactions have been recorded at this time. That was something that, uh, I'm working with staff to make sure we have that caught up.
Okay, and then the capital improvements are in red. Why is that?
Capital improvements? Let me go back to that report.
Looks like the current total budget, there's a negative, or in red, 550,000 that carries across your other columns.
Yeah.
And that's under expenses, so I would think that that would be a, some type of credit?
Oh, the capital improvements of the, this year versus last year for the fiscal activity in the wastewater fund? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, I'm looking at, uh, report number three, wastewater fund income statement budgets actual. First column is current total budget.
Oh, yes. That is because when we created the budget for the wastewater fund, there's, there's actually three different funds that are put together there. One being the operational, one being the, um, developer impact fee portion, and one being the capital funds. And so the capital funds have additional funding that comes to it in order to cover the cost of capital improvements. So it's a little misleading having all of those in one spot.
Okay.
But it's because we have funds coming in available to pay for the improvements that will then occur in the sewer fund.
Okay. And then the last question's for financial report number four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my notes say proprietary revenues, 72%. First of all, what are proprietary revenues?
That would be the billing to the customers of the wastewater fund.
Okay, and, um, I'm not sure where I see this, plus 72%. Is that year-over-year? I don't, oh, there it is. Um... Okay, so I think I, I, I'm good with that. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, just a brief one. So, um, councilmember White answered, you answered the first one with the color thing. Um, so my only other question is on the, um, second report, I believe, on the comparisons.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how would you, if you were to summarize the 1617 act...
How would you, if you were to summarize the sixteen seventeen activity with the seventeen eighteen comparison, how would you say in your opinion that we're doing?
Actually, it looks really close to where I would have expected it. We're getting much closer, much better at estimating what our revenue cycles are, what our expense cycles are. And using the comparisons, I can see that things are trending where we expected them to. And then I can see things that are off and I can go right to them and we're able to find discrepancies or entries that haven't been made. And we're getting those captured much more quickly than we were before. So I think we're on task right now.
So that brings us to my last question is when we come with the mid-year report, you'd be able to identify hopefully by that point if you saw things going awry and address that at that point?
Absolutely. If there's anything that seems to be out of line and we need to discuss budget adjustments, we will do that. If something is not a net zero effect within the budget, then we can discuss that in detail as well.
Okay.
Councilmember Lara?
Okay.
The, most of everything has been covered. The only thing, you talked about the formula and having some issues with trying to do a little cleanup on the formula. And there's a couple of the formula where reports error divided by zero and I'm assuming that that's part of the cleanup.
Right, when it does the error, it's because the denominator's a zero. That's a special formula that I'll have to go in and override to make those not appear.
So you'll just clean it up all at once and then, okay. And we are going to get this report on what's your cycle for reporting on this now?
You'll be receiving the report after the Finance and Audit Committee has reviewed it and their meeting is the first Monday of each month. So you'll be receiving it at the second council meeting each month. You'll have one report every month and this next go-around, it'll be December, which will include a mid-year review. And then the following month, it will be January and we will continue in that direction for the rest of the year.
Okay, thank you. And are you considering putting it on the consent calendar and then having us pull it? Or do you see this as an agenda item on a regular basis?
I believe it may be something that if the council is comfortable with it, it could be on the consent calendar and pulled if there's a concern by one of the council members, knowing that the Finance and Audit Committee is going to be reviewing these along with some other reports at a little bit of a broader depth to see if there were anything else that they would have considered.
All right, thank you. This is receive and file.
It sounds like one change we need to make is maybe what the beginning balance was on the balance sheet for the funds. And so then we can kind of give a projected.
Add an equity to the...
Yeah, kind of what the real-time impact to the reserve or to the fund balance may be. So we can do that by the method fund types.
And I agree with the direction I think the mayor was going, which is that we put this on consent agenda and we can pull it off if we have questions. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to receive and file it? Are we good with it? Okay, thank you. Item twenty-three, acceptance of Finance Department Policies and Procedure Manual.
Hello, mayor and council. The Finance and Audit Committee and I have been working over the last six months to begin putting together a comprehensive Finance Department Policy and Procedure Manual. We started with the big areas. Each monthly meeting, we went through one of the, what we will consider chapters, knowing that once we got to this point, we would determine if we had enough to recommend to council for approval. So at the last meeting, it was so decided that we had the bulk of it, the big picture in order to have it come to council for review. Over the next year, we will continue to add chapters to it as we look at some of the more detailed, more specific items that we feel are important enough that they should be included in the manual itself. And then on not less than an annual basis, the committee's going to review the entire document and see if there are any areas for improvement, any edits, changes based on the conditions or staffing or anything else that may affect it. So this is our current document that we are running with and following. And then as we make major improvements, from time to time, we will bring it back to council for review and approval.
Thank you. Public comment?
No requests.
Councilmember White?
Real quick, it looked good, I really liked it, but I wanted to ask Mr. Pardon if this has been shared with the consultant who's overviewing our SEC practices?
Yes, we, this was included with the information that we put together and sent over to Bradley, who is the independent counsel, who is reviewing the city's financial policies pursuant to the SEC investigation. And they were very positive about this and really gave kudos to Malana for putting together really a nice financial policy. So hopefully that'll be a good comment that we receive at some point.
Okay, and that was a verbal comment?
Yes.
Trying to save you a public records request.
Yes, sir.
Malana, is the staff confident that the procedures in the manual will satisfy the deficiency findings in the controller's report?
Yes, yes, we are very confident in that. And the staff that I have, they're also aware of this. They read my drafts as we went forward to make sure that I didn't miss anything that they would have considered and so that I could also get any input from them so that we work together collaboratively internally before I took it to committee in order to see if there, you know, I didn't want to miss anything in the process. So we are working under the guides that are here in this policy and procedure manual now.
And I just want to compliment the staff and you and the financial academy. Such an excellent example of everyone working together to come up with new improved policies and procedures, incident manager as well. So I really appreciate that and I like the annual review part. That'll make it a living document for me to justify.
Absolutely, thank you.
Great job, thank you.
My echo.
Thank you. I have a question about, you said if there, you are going to, at a minimum, you're going to review it once a year. And if it gets, needs to get reviewed before that or if something comes up or is brought up in Finance and Audit. And you do think that there needs to be an update. Do you need to bring it back to us to approve it after that if it's not a substantial change or is it something? I'm not sure how that's going to work.
If it's just like a grammatical change, I wouldn't think we would bring it back to council. But if we rework one of the chapters or we add another section, anything that has some substantiation, substantiate, yeah, if it's really big and important, we'll bring it back to council.
Okay, good, thank you.
I move to accept the Finance Policies and Procedures Manual.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item twenty-four, award of contract for community facilities district CFD administration, special tax consulting and annual financial reporting services.
I'm back. The council had asked staff to take our CFD administration consulting and reporting services out to an RFP. We did draft that. We put it on the service that we are using and I had it published on a national level so that any firm with any interest in responding to the RFP could do so. We did get four proposals and they have been summarized in the staff report. We received bids from NBS, from Spicer Consulting, David Towesick and Associates, and Albert A. Webb. We had three individuals score the proposals. We had a fourth who did a verbal commentary about some of the things that were seen, considerations that should be made. And scores were added and they were ranked in order of the highest score down. We then took those rankings and we compared them to the fee proposals that came with them. And the staff is recommending that council approve an award of the contract to Albert A. Webb. They came in with the lowest bid and scored highest by all of those who reviewed the proposals. So if you have any questions, I have all of my documentation here.
Thank you. Public comment?
No requests.
Thank you. Councilmember White?
Well, you know I have questions.
I just automatically looked in that direction.
You sure?
I just go through a given order.
So in November, we approved a, you were asking us, Mr. Pardon, for an amendment to add an additional year to their two-year contract and council decided that we wanted to go out to RFP, not to just automatically, not to extend the one year. So we approved in November a contract, I believe for two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand or something similar to that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, but that contract was not for, or was it for, from November to where this one takes over or was it for the full year? What did that represent?
Six-month, which would take you through February.
Okay. Okay, and when does the one-eighty-five start?
Well, that's a good question. We had anticipated that a new contract would start at the, really at the beginning of March, so March one.
Okay. Okay, so I just wanted to make a comment that when Webb and Associates first came in, there weren't a whole lot of people beating down the door to come help us. And we brought you in right away on an emergency basis because we had just lost our tax person and we needed to get something done within a certain period of time. So we brought you in real quick. We understand that we paid a premium for that. And then the first year renewal, we did go out to bid on that. And if I remember correctly, Mike, you can help me. Your contract was significantly higher, your bid was higher than the other alternates, but we chose to stay with you because we felt you had been in the area, you had been in our books for a while and you recognized that it was a bigger challenge than probably the other candidates recognized. And then I'd hoped on, in November, when we agreed to go back out to RFP, that we might be able to stop paying you a premium. And I think your bid is very in line with everyone else's bids. And I just want to let you know that I appreciate the fact that you've put in a competitive bid and I support your receiving that bid, the contract. Thank you.
The only thing I want to ask is just, Malana, can you just briefly, how do we, how do we look at the first proposals? How are they unsealed and who sees them and how does that work at the beginning? And the reason I ask this is because we've got a bid that's seven hundred dollars under the next bid. And I can already hear people saying, oh, yeah, sure, you know, they bid that. So I just want to reassure the public that we have procedures in place that are legitimate. And how do we go about seeing who sees them and do we have them on file where you can see the original bid?
I do have them all on file. For this particular bid, we'd asked that those who are submitting their bids submit them electronically. They were sent to me specifically. We did receive three of them electronically. One was hand-delivered, paper copy. If it helps, the very first one that I received was from Albert Webb and Associates. I received it well in advance of the deadline. The others I received on the date of deadline and I didn't actually open or read any of them until I had them all and only after I had determined who would be the scorers on the panel and had distributed the copies to everyone.
All right, satisfied, thank you.
Mayor, I have one follow-up real quick.
Sure.
The contract that we're awarding tonight covers from when it starts, March first of 2018 to March first of 2019, is that correct? Okay.
The entire cycle of the next assessment period.
Got it. Thank you.
So with that, with this contract, then we're getting back to some type of a normalcy in this process where it's done actually annually instead of...
Correct.
Sporadically. I agree with Councilmember White. Webb and Associates came in and bailed us out and you came back with a competitive bid as you indicated you would at some point. And you've done fantastic work for the city and I'm looking forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, mayor.
And to just add a little bit of clarification to your bid process, the, and when these are then scored by the team that you reach out to to go ahead and do the scoring, this is not a collaborative scoring. Each person that you reach out to has to score based on the criteria that you have documented and they do it individually and there's no cross-talk on what people think about different vendors.
Correct. They're all done independently and all the score sheets were then sent back to me and I have them and I'm the one who tabulated them. The verbal commentary that was given was given to me as well. So all of those comments, all of that information is together and it's all in this file.
And the people that you reach out to are people that are knowledgeable in the subject matter enough that they would be able to give you a substantive answer on all of the criteria that you look for?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, it is.
Good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I didn't see the actual contract in here. Is this going to be a contract with a one-year renewal or how, what's the contract going to be designed?
Yeah, the contract wouldn't end, but we were looking at initial three-year term with an option for council to two one-year extensions. And that was kind of follow-on with our existing policy.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve a contract with Albert A. Webb Associates not to exceed one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars for annual CFD administration, special tax consulting and annual financial reporting services.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item twenty-five, Highland Springs Bus Stop.
Good evening again. So I'm going to give you a little bit of chronology to bring you up to speed as to why we're here tonight. In April of last year, the city manager, Todd Parton, and I met with the then-city manager, Michael Rock, and their community services director, Heidi, who's my counterpart in Banning, to talk about inter-agency coordination between our two public operation, public transit operations. And at that meeting, we were talking about many different things, but at that meeting, Banning's Community Services Director suggested that we move our bus stop that's located on Sixth Street in front of the Food for Less Shopping Center to Highland Springs Avenue. And so Todd and I said, okay, well, let's look at it. We did some onboard surveys on, we put staff on the buses to take some data collection and we also agreed to enlist our traffic engineer, Minagar and Associates, to look at the feasibility of putting a stop on Highland Springs Avenue. So Mr. Minagar did the feasibility analysis and it is attached to the staff report tonight. And what he looked at concluded that the relocation of the bus stop from Sixth Street around the corner to Highland Springs Avenue was feasible. And he looked at, as you can see in the attachment, he looked at the number of buses, the timing, the traffic flows, the signals, all kinds of stuff. Fast forward to September, Exenia Avenue Street Improvement Project began and it, we, staff and I were sitting down looking at how we were going to reroute our buses because the Noble Creek Apartments on Exenia Avenue is a major stop for us. And it occurred to us that in our reroute plan during that construction, Banning's buses would be, and they have four buses that go to Exenia Avenue, Banning's buses would be, there would be a lot of deadhead if they did the reroute that we were looking at. There would be a lot of deadhead if they did the reroute that we were looking at. And so, we notified Banning, and we let them know that they were going to see significant increases in mileage to make the loop around to get back to the Stater Brothers Food for Less stop on Sixth Street. So, we decided that we offered to move the bus stop. Because we had the traffic study already done, we offered to move... Temporarily move the bus stop to Highland Springs Avenue specifically for that reason, so that Banning's buses could still service the Food for Less Shopping Center with their passengers. To date, we have not received any complaints with that move. It is still there on Highland Springs Avenue. We are still not going down Exenia Avenue. It's also improved the visibility of public transportation options. Highland Springs is a major corridor for both cities, and having a bus stop on Highland Springs has improved the visibility and let people... To let people know that we have public transit in town. Staff recommends that we abandon the Sixth Street bus stop, and we relocate it to Highland Springs Avenue, south of the southwest corner of Sixth Street and Highland Springs Avenue in accordance with the traffic engineering analysis dated May of 2017. The fiscal impact is minimal. It won't exceed $500, and we will absorb that in our current budget.
Thank you. Public comments?
No requests.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I do.
Councilmember Laura? I'm going to go this way once.
No, you don't have to.
We're going to go this way.
So, I know that we did the traffic study, but... And my memory is fuzzy, but on Sixth Street, don't we have a slight turnout?
No.
No. So, it's right on the street? But do we have more room? Because it doesn't look like the vehicular traffic... For one, on Highland Springs, it gets... It's nutty at best some days.
It is, especially during the holidays.
Yeah. Yeah. So, to me, it just seems like a bus stop that close to the corner would be problematic in a safety concern. And you think of the traffic and everybody trying to make that left-hand turn and beat the light, or stop in the middle of the intersection, or they wait for the light to change, and...
There's actually almost three lanes there.
Is there?
And so, where the bus stop is, southbound on Highland Springs Avenue... Can you put the map up? Is that possible?
Is that part of your staff report? Is it a map?
It's part of the staff report, yeah. So, southbound on Highland Springs... Let's start with that. Southbound on Highland Springs, as you're approaching Sixth Street, the area where the bus actually stops is the beginning of the left-turn-only lane to the freeway. And so, southbound traffic, they're going to pick the number-one or the number-two lane.
Right.
They're going to get caught in a... I'm sorry, a right-turn-only onto the freeway. And so, we looked at that, as did the engineer. And there's not a lot of... As you're approaching Sixth Street, the right turn pocket forces you to turn right on Sixth Street. So, actually, if you continue through the intersection, you're making an illegal move.
Right.
You need to be in the one or two lane. So, you don't have the southbound traffic where the bus stops. As you're eastbound on Sixth Street, making the right onto Highland Springs Avenue, the buses are far enough over that when you make that right... And the bus stop is far enough south, as you make that right, it's very clear visually.
Okay.
You're approaching a bus or move over. It's not... It doesn't block the southbound lane, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
It's tucked in.
Okay. And so, that... I guess that line of traffic that you see is actually the... Is that the middle lane? Will you see the cars in the aerial photo?
That is the middle lane, correct.
And maybe I'm just missing the perspective. It just looks like that bus stop would be in the middle of the slow lane.
There's enough room. And the reason we picked that area, and the reason that Mr. Minagar looked at that area, there's enough room that you can actually pass the bus in that number-two lane without stopping.
Okay. And that would be my concern. And the bus drivers didn't have any issues with that?
No. No.
Thank you very much.
So, are we looking at the far side stop, one bus? Want to go down further on your report?
Far side... Are you looking at...
Yeah, the next one down, if we go a few pages down, or that one. Is that what we're looking at there?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. So, and that kind of goes with what Councilmember Laura was saying. So, that was my concern. This was definitely the try. You said Highland Springs, I panicked. So, it does look like there's enough room to get around the bus. Do they... How long do they park there usually? I mean, as they wait? Does it depend on the...
It depends. If we have a mobility issue with a passenger, they could be there anywhere from three to five minutes. Generally speaking, they pull up, they're there 45 seconds to a minute, long enough to load the one or two passengers, and then keep on... You know, to keep going. One of the reasons that we provided the time points, and you can see that in the analysis, one of the reasons that we provided the time points is to give the engineer a good idea of how frequent the buses are there. And so, that's why he did the one bus and the two buses, because sometimes you can't fit two buses in a particular location. And we said, based on the time points, there's seven buses that frequent the stop, four of which are City of Banning, three of which are ours. And so, there's the high potential of having more than one bus there. And he believes in his analysis that even two buses can pull up there. Now, mobility-wise, if we have to board a wheelchair, then we're talking about a three-to-five-minute delay.
Note, being that that's not going to be a major stop now.
Right.
That might bring time up a little bit, maybe.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. It's not a new stop, so the passengers that frequent Food for Less and Stater Brothers, it's actually closer for them to get to the bus stop. So, it's not a new stop. So, those that are used... Have been using that stop, you know, they'll continue to use it.
Well, if you're confident, and they're confident, that that's not going to create nuisance, I support that.
The temporary bus stop has been there for four months.
And so far, so good.
Looks like it's also better access to the curb cut for the ADA ramp from the crossing to...
Correct. Yeah.
Not necessarily a question, but this is on topic, so I wanted to bring it up. We, our last meeting with the mayor and Heidi... Heidi wasn't supposed to be there, but the mayor and the current chairman of RTA, we had discussed as a group, and I'm sort of letting you know this so I can let council know at the same time, we discussed that point of getting a new study done. And the direction that we had all agreed to take at that meeting, which was, what, a couple of months ago, maybe even longer, was that each city would put together their own needs requirements, and then the cities would come together and agree on a joint group of needs requirements. And then, we were told from the gentleman at RTA that he would work with RCTC to get it funded. We since have not brought that back to council, and I think a lot of it had to do with we had not seen follow-up on some actions that were promised on the other... On Banning's side. At the RCTC meeting I was at last week, I sat next to one of the Banning council members, and she wanted to know what... Where we were and what the update was. And I explained to her what I just explained to you. And she has made a commitment to... On the first meeting in February, in her... In their council, to get direction from her council to follow through with what we had talked about. So, I think if they are going to do that, then we should do it as well. But I recommend that you talk to your counterpart over there to make sure that, you know, they're on board with that. Because we really... It seems like an awful lot of buses duplicating efforts at that... At that one spot, not to mention elsewhere. And we really need to get a joint study done so that, you know, it's much more efficient for both agencies.
Definitely. We... Heidi and I are going down to RCTC to meet with RCTC on, I think it's February 1st.
Okay.
That meeting's been set up for about 10 days now. And the intent of that meeting is to talk about some joint capital projects, joint issues, prior to the full SRTP kickoff, which happens usually around the third week in February. So, the two agencies are meeting with RCTC, at least at a staff level, right now.
Okay.
Thank you. And when you do that, that's a more comprehensive study than just what you did with Minagar, because Minagar was just to look at this particular. So, that would be a much more comprehensive study for the whole public transportation in the city, correct?
Yes. Yes. This was just a traffic analysis on one bus stop.
Okay. And the... My only question about this, and we did talk about this, and everything about this looks good. The only question I have, which we didn't talk about, is pedestrians. Is this any more risky for pedestrians because it's... If they try to catch the bus and go across Highland Springs, and does this create more of a potential issue with pedestrians than on a more quiet street like Exenia for getting this? What are your thoughts on that?
In my limited risk management experience, we are moving passengers closer to a crosswalk, a lighted crosswalk. I think it increases their safety moving the stop here. The Sixth Street stop was mid-block, almost across from the fire station. And pedestrians tend, you know, to use the shortest path between two points. I've seen other cities put up... Redlands, for example, they put up a wrought iron fence in the middle of Redlands Boulevard to prevent people from crossing. This actually moves the passengers closer to the intersection where they have the lights and the crosswalks.
Okay. I can see that. All right. Good. I will entertain a motion to accept the feasibility analysis for bus stop relocation, for the bus stop from the west of the southwest corner of East Sixth Street, Highland Springs Avenue, to the south of the southwest corner on Highland Springs Avenue, and direct staff to abandon the current bus stop on Sixth Street located in front of Food for Less, and install a bus stop at the recommended location on Highland Springs Avenue. Do I have a motion?
So, move?
I'll second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item 26, Proposal to Explore Supplements to Paratransit Services.
So, this report is before you tonight to start the thought process about the upcoming budget. As you know, transit's budget process starts at the kickoff meeting, the third week in February. That's when we learn from RCTC how much money is available. We talk to them about proposed capital projects, proposed budget changes, increases, decreases. So, we wanted to bring this to you tonight to talk about what we're looking at as far as paratransit services. Paratransit services are dial-a-ride, if you will, in this city. So, it's door-to-door, curb-to-curb, reservation-based, public transit services. It is not fixed route. So, the demand for paratransit services is increasing each fiscal year as the city grows more and more paratransit-qualified individuals move into the city. It is on-demand. It is reservation-based, and it is curb-to-curb. And we do go from Cherry Valley throughout Beaumont and into parts of Banning. The Calamaesa Paratransit Services, because we have a fixed route there, stays within Calamaesa. Historically, our policy has been to offer paratransit services to seniors over the age of 65 and anyone certified with a disability, which is more than what the law requires us to do. We are required to offer services to anyone that is certified under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And under the federal regulations, anytime there's a fixed route and service, we have to offer dial-a-ride services. So, our fixed routes start at 5:30 in the morning. By law, we have to provide dial-a-ride services at 5:30 in the morning. It's a complimentary service. Any route that is available to a general passenger, we have to add a complimentary route through dial-a-ride. Paratransit ridership is at 5%... It's 5% of the total passenger base for Beaumont, and our budgeted operational costs equal 7%. Fairbox Recovery is at 6% for dial-a-ride, and we are mandated to be at 10%. And so, we are 4% below where we should be at with dial-a-ride. We are exploring options that address the growing demand of paratransit services while adhering to the federal and state mandates. One such option that we're looking at right now is something that OmniTrans is doing currently, and that is a Lyft program, Uber or Lyft. They have on-demand transportation services throughout the inland empire, and Beaumont has that same type of transportation service here in the past area. So, OmniTrans uses Lyft and taxi services to provide paratransit services to seniors and persons with disability, and they leave their dial-a-ride program simply for the ADA transit passengers. So, how does the OmniTrans Lyft program work? Participants complete an eligibility application, and they provide proof of age or disability. In our case, it would be senior 65 and over, or those certified with a disability. Once approved for the program, the eligible passengers purchase Lyft credits through OmniTrans. It's at a discounted price, and there's a monthly limit. It's currently... OmniTrans's monthly limit is $40 per month per passenger. Participants are given a voucher code. They use the app on their phone, and they punch that voucher code into the app. So, the passenger gives Omni $40 by credit card. Omni gives them $80 in voucher credits to be used for the month. The passengers then schedule the rides directly with Lyft. OmniTrans is no longer in the mix. Once the fare balance is exhausted, they either purchase more if they're not... If they haven't hit their monthly limit, or they wait until the next month, and they purchase more. The transit industry recognizes that paratransit is costly, but it's necessary, and it's a mandated expense. Paratransit is projected by the public transit industry to cost three times as much as a fixed route service. So, in an effort to reduce costs, public transit agencies have been exploring other alternatives to provide a similar level of service to those who qualify, and Lyft is one of those options. And we believe it's a viable option. There's no fiscal impact at this time, and our recommendation is that you direct city staff to identify and evaluate options for supplements to paratransit services, and provide a report back to city council to include the findings and recommendations. At this point, we need to really take a hard look at other options for paratransit. And I'm not talking about the ADA mandated. I'm talking about those that aren't mandated.
Thank you. Do you have public comments?
No requests.
Council questions?
Just one on... Using the Lyft, do you know, or has anybody... OmniTrans talked about any risks of liability or increased risk of liability? Because that passenger... Or is that passenger no longer our responsibility if they're using Lyft?
Correct. So, the role of Omni is to match dollar for dollar, up to the $40, to provide transportation to seniors and disabled that cannot or may not be able to use fixed route.
Okay.
Once they're using Lyft, there's no liability on Omnis.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a really valuable program.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Question?
Yeah, I do, actually. So, my first question was liability, so that... Thank you.
But explain to me one more time. So, for the ADA requirement, they're not being charged, correct?
They are being charged.
They are charged, but at a discount. They are charged, but at discount.
Are we talking about Lyft or paratransit?
No, right now, our current, our current, yeah, not on the.
Yes, no. Dial-a-ride passengers pay. By law, we are allowed to charge twice the amount of a fixed route passenger. So, for a general passenger, it's $1.15 to ride fixed route. We, right now, charge $2, but we can increase that to $2.30.
So, the logic says we have to offer the route, but they still have to pay for it?
Correct.
Okay, so, so we're running at 7%, we're recovering at 6%, but are supposed to be at 10, so we're down 4, really, is what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's still meeting Fairbox, I mean, that's still considering Fairbox. Okay, I, I thought we were subsidizing in a different way.
And I think maybe where the confusion might be is our overall Fairbox, fixed route and dial-a-ride, is at 11.3%. If you separate the two programs, dial-a-ride is at 6%. If we can bring that up, then our, our overall Fairbox increases.
Which brings me to the next question, then. So, they're looking at the mandate of 10% combined, though?
Combined, correct.
So, they're bringing it down, so if we can bring them up, it'll bring the other side up?
Correct. Right, right.
So, how does the credits fit into the Fairbox calculation?
It's operational.
Oh.
It's, it's, the last number I saw was about $89 per revenue mile. So, for every mile the bus goes, the budget is charged $89. If we were to give the person $40, and I haven't run the numbers yet, but if we were to give the person $40, as opposed to picking them up, we're saving money.
Very, I get it, thank you.
Do you expect this, if you go this route, one of the things you may find out is that demand will increase considerably for this?
Yes.
I would think so.
They, they still have to qualify, and that is, that is the key. It would still be offered to seniors 65 and over, and those that are qualified disabled. The difference is, is the law doesn't require us to transport those. Some agencies don't. They just don't transport seniors and disabled, because it's too costly. Here, geographically, we're limited in the pass area, so that's not my recommendation. I don't, I don't recommend not transporting seniors and disabled.
And with dial-a-ride type services, as I understood it, there sometimes was considerable wait with getting the service. There would be a bit of a delay. You schedule it, but sometimes you have to wait, like to be picked up to return, let's say, from medical appointment, et cetera, and they can't come as quickly as you would like. So, do you think potentially using Lyft-type services will shorten that wait?
Yes, because Lyft, you call, you call the ride when you're ready. And this happened today. We had a gentleman that, we transport a lot to Beaver and San Gregorio on Highland Springs. He scheduled his return trip with us at, with a guest. He, his doctor's appointment was at noon. He thought, well, my doctor usually takes about two hours. Well, lo and behold, he was done in 30 minutes. And so, he's waiting an hour and a half for us, because we have back-to-back appointments. And, and so, if you think about it, when we're going into budget, we can add, we have two buses right now. We can add a third bus, and our fare box is going to drop farther. Or, we can look at ways to pick up the people that don't have mobility, or not. The other thing that we're up against is ADA by law can bump a senior or a disabled person. When a ADA-certified person calls us, we have an hour. We can negotiate the pickup time within an hour. So, if, if you're ADA-certified, and you call and say, I need an appointment for tomorrow at 2 o'clock, I can only give you an hour before or an hour after, but sometime between 1 and 3, by law, I have to pick you up. Now, if I'm full between 1 and 3, I have to pick up the phone and call those other non-ADA people and say, sorry, we can't take you.
Okay.
And so, that's, that's the dilemma.
All right. No more questions? I will call for a motion to direct city staff to identify and evaluate options for supplements to paratransit services and provide a report back to the city council to include findings and recommendations.
Also move.
I'll second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Sorry.
I would like to take a short break before we move on to item 27. Take a short break at 8:55 and return at 8:05. Order at 8:05. If, if council is in agreement, I would like to move item 30, which is the appointments for the Economic Development Committee and Finance and Audit Committee. I'd like to move that item up before item 27. If everyone's in agreement?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you. So, item 30, annual appointments for the Economic Development Committee and the Finance and Audit Committee. The...
If you want, I can give you a...
Pardon me?
I can give you a report on it if you'd like.
Would you please? Thank you.
There are currently vacancies on the Finance and Audit Committee and the Economic Development Committee. And these are due to, in the policies, we've set expiration dates for terms. So, the expiration is January of 2018. So, with that, we opened up a process to accept applications. We've received six, three for Finance and Audit, and three for Economic Development. We have, I'll have to look at my staff report, but I believe we have five vacancies on the Finance and Audit, two are alternate, and three are positions on the committee. And then, for Economic Development, I believe we have three vacancies on there. Let me pull it to verify.
Thank you. The Economic Development Committee, the, do, we have candidates here tonight, correct?
Correct.
Are they for both committees, or are...
All of the applicants were contacted, and told to know that it would be on the agenda tonight.
All right. Thank you. What I'd like to do is, you have, who is here? Do you have, I don't know the names of the people who are in the audience here, but I would like to...
I can go through the applicants.
...give them an opportunity to come up and to introduce themselves, and then to open it up to council to ask some questions.
Mayor, before we start that process, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
I'm looking at the list of Finance and Audit Committee, and it lists three resident members, Elaine, Stephen, and John. Are they, did they put their names in to be continued, or...
The only reoccurring member is Stephen Martino. I spoke with him earlier today, and he's sick.
Okay.
This evening, he wanted to try and make it, but Elaine did not submit an application. She did not want to reapply.
Okay.
And I spoke with Mr. Chamberlain, and he did not want to reapply either.
Okay. All right.
So, that means for Finance and Audit, we'll have a total of four openings?
There's five total. Three are on the committee, and then we have two alternate positions also.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so if the council is in agreement, I would like to...
Do you want me to call the names?
Invite the people up to speak, and then give them time to just introduce themselves and ask questions of them.
Okay. I'm just going to go in the order of the applications here. Is Wendy Fuller here? No.
She was here.
I think she might have left.
Stephen Martino is not here. Next one is Kimberly Stars.
Hello, mayor and council. My name's Kimberly Stars. I am a fairly new resident to the city of Beaumont, and would absolutely love and be delighted to serve on the committee. I don't know what you'd like me to say, or if you'd like to just ask, answer, ask your questions, and I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll start, if you would like. So, why are you interested in the Finance and Audit Committee? What, could you speak to why, in particular, that committee may interest you?
It's actually the Economic Development Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. That's my mistake, then.
No problem.
I was scanning through Finance and Audit. All right, go ahead, then. Please take the same question and apply it to the Economic Development.
Absolutely. I've spent the last 13 years in a career with nonprofit development. My current role, I serve as the Chief Development Officer for United Way of the Inland Valleys. My primary responsibility is to really interface with corporate CEOs and directors for local, some Fortune 500 companies, and also small and large businesses. My interest in serving on the committee is that, being a new resident in Beaumont, I feel like I do have some connections and some talents that might be applicable here to this specific committee. My greatest desire is to see the town that I'm raising my children in to be a thriving economic center, and I, if I could so humbly offer myself as somebody who might be able to help further those pursuits.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Question?
I really have a question for council. I've read all of these resumes, and I think they're outstanding. Besides Kimberly who's here, who else is, is, is here? Because I'm, you know, I'm wondering, I don't have any questions for Kimberly, because I think she'd be a great applicant, but I'm wondering if, if we've done our homework and we're comfortable with the resumes, I don't really have any questions other than, number one, are they here? If they're here, to me, and, and they submitted a resume that's, you know, of quality, I think we could shorten this process, but, so besides Kimberly, who else is here?
I believe we have Bertha Barazza.
Hi, Bertha.
Hello. Good evening, mayor, and members of the committee. My name is Dr. Bertha Barazza. I'm a professor, counselor, I'm out in the St. College. I had been in the, in the academic business for 20 years plus, and it's been a wonderful experience for me. My core role as a college counselor is to advise students, to guide them into their, I guess, career that they will be happy doing, being in the pass area, in the past seven years, at the San Gregorio Pass campus. It has been a wonderful experience for me, because I learned about the cities and what the needs are. And so, when I get to speak to students, it's wonderful, because I have an insight of what the cities are needing. But also, it's important, because I don't live in the community. So, serving in the committee will help me better serve my students. I also teach the career in major search classes here in the pass area. And so, I send my students out in the community to interview professionals in the area, and they also, their final is to do an interview for their jobs. And so, working in that committee will, again, be beneficial, not just for me, but for my students and your future employees in the city.
Thank you, Bertha.
Absolutely.
Now, it's Bertha and Kimberly that are for the Economic Development Committee, correct?
Yes.
And we don't have any other candidates for that here tonight?
Not for economic development.
Right.
We have an applicant here for Finance and Audit.
Right. I thought so. Okay.
I would move to approve Bertha and, I'm sorry, Ms. Barazza. You're already on the committee, correct?
Correct.
Yes, Ms. Ms. Barazza and Ms. Stars?
Stars.
Stars to serve as full members on the Economic Development Committee. I think they'd both be the business representatives, correct?
Community college, for me.
Community college.
Okay, so, community college and then a business representative. So, I move to approve those two for the Economic Development Committee.
I'll second that.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
You're both.
You bet.
Congratulations.
And Finance and Audit Committee?
I'll just stand up. My name is Anna Olvera. I applied last time for the council, and you guys encouraged me to apply for this, and I think this is a good start. I'm tired of sitting on the sidelines and judging. I want to know, I want to help. I do have my own accounting firm. I am an enrolled agent, and I have quite an extensive experience in state and federal tax law. So, what better than to donate my time and help my own community? I've lived in Beaumont for the last, I'm going on nine years this year, and I, I'm emotionally invested. Like I've said before, I do have a 16-year-old, and I do have an eight-year-old, and I do want to donate my time and maybe help out, bring fresh ideas, and provide my expertise in helping my community.
Anna, I remember talking to you before.
Yes.
I called you on the phone when you were applying...
I know, I got like five phone calls, and I started giggling, and I didn't, I wasn't laughing at you.
Well, you wouldn't be the first. But I very much appreciated having the conversation with you. I think you'd be a great addition. I, I really appreciated both your knowledge and your energy when I talked to you on the phone. And I, I think we're, I, social, on social media, I've seen your interests in the city, and so, I think you'd be terrific. So, I make a motion to accept Anna, unless anybody has any other questions that they'd like to...
I'll second the motion.
Ask her. Thanks. We're really pleased. Thank you, Anna.
Just the, what, what seems to amaze me is the caliber of applicants that we continually get, and so, I think we've been very lucky for both committees.
Now, I think Wendy was here earlier, correct?
I think we have to vote on...
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't vote.
Sorry.
Do we want to vote on several committee appointments at once, or do you want to do one at once?
Didn't we vote on the first two already?
Yes, we did. We did.
I think we can vote on Anna.
Yeah, just Anna.
Yes. Are we voting on any of the other Finance and Audit Committee applicants when we vote on Anna, or are we voting on just Anna?
The motion on the table is just Anna.
Okay. All right, bye.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. Martino and Wendy Fuller to the Finance Committee.
I'll second that.
That's what they were both applying for, correct?
Correct.
Do we need three full-time members at this point?
Yes, three full-time members, and there's three applicants.
So, all we'll need after this is two alternates?
Two alternates.
Okay.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
My only question was Wendy had, Ms. Fuller had a alternate on her application. Is that the only thing she was applying for, or does she...
Good point.
I believe her application was received prior to opening...
Oh.
The vacancies.
Okay, so...
And she didn't raise any concern of that when I spoke to her.
Okay.
So, we're all set?
All set.
Okay. Item 27, Award of Construction Contract Agreement to Major Corporation for the Eighth Street Resurfacing Project, and approve not to exceed 10% contingency.
Honorable mayor, councilmember, this contract is for resurfacing of Eighth Street from Pennsylvania to Xenia. We went out to bid on this project on November 20, or November 15 of last year. We received several bids. Marriage was the lowest bidder on this project. If, if you recall, as part of this project, we had also, and we had an agreement with the Warren District, where they were going to reimburse us for some of the work that they wanted us to do. After... After receiving the bid, they chose not to have that done through this contract. They are, however, moving forward and doing that as a separate contract. I think they'll get better prices if they did it on their own, some of the work on their own, and they'll contract some of the work out. That work will still get done. They will do that prior to us doing this project. So, that will be done. The total for this project, total cost for this project is $515,000. We are asking contingency be set aside for not to exceed 10% of that amount. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have public comment?
No.
Council questions?
So, the change in the contract, that the Water District is, sounds like they're going to do, they anticipate doing more work than originally agreed to? Do I understand that correctly?
When we went out to bid, the bid, they had originally estimated at $85,000 their cost of the work. It came in close to $400,000. So, they decided to do it in a different way by doing some of the work in-house and then contracting some of the work out. So, we're not, this $515 does not include any of the Water District work.
Okay. I just want to make sure, and I respect the fact that the Water District is trying to look out for their constituents and save money, but I'd hate for it to hold up this contract moving forward as far as construction start, construction completion. Am I correct in that?
That is correct, but we're also, their lines are very shallow, their lines are very old. So, what we would like them to do is go ahead and remove those and replace them. They are, they're willing to do that, and I think they're working diligently to get that done.
Okay.
But we don't want to move forward this project, because we are spending a lot of money and doing a lot of work, and then if there are leaks out there, which, you know, periodically there are leaks on that street, that would cause us to do the, to go out there, they will go out there and cut the street that we just paved. So, we're working with them, they're aware of our timelines, and I believe they're willing to meet them, you know, with the way they are doing their project. We're very satisfied with the progress that they made so far.
And I think that's important, to make sure that we do work with the Water District, because they are a partner in this community. I just, sometimes contracts are, the price is good for a limited time, and I just want to make sure that there isn't any potential issues with that. That's all. So, just keep that in mind moving forward? I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Mr. Martino.
Just two quick questions. So, the bid two, then, is the water part of it? The water, you source utilities, is that what it means by bid two? Or is bid schedule two, excuse me?
The bid schedule, the way we prepared the bid schedule was, we made sure that their bids were separate. So, there was schedule for our cost, and there's schedule for their cost.
And theirs is two.
Yeah, and then, and we are awarding based on our bid.
On, okay.
Which is the lowest of the four bids that we're seeing.
Right, and then, so how does the original reimbursement agreement work? Is that just put on hold now, because they're going back to the drawing board and seeing what they're going to do?
They will not, we will, they will not be part of this contract, so there will not be a reimbursement. They'll just do that as a separate item.
Also, they're just doing it on their own.
There's no need to use that agreement.
Oh, okay, so that's why you're saying you're coordinating with them, so that you can see when they're going to do theirs and ours and so forth?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, they're going to be responsible for all of the work that they would have reimbursed us for if we had done the contract together?
That is correct.
Okay. I recognize that the people at the Water District and the people running the city right now are not the same people that were there seven or eight years ago, but there was a huge issue regarding the bridge over by the high school?
Yes.
Remember that? And it ended up in a point where one agency said, "We would do this," and the other agency said, "Well, we'll get approval from you before we do this." Went back and forth, and it ended up, the ratepayers of the Water District suing the taxpayers of the city. And so, people like myself were paying lawyers on both sides to fight a claim. So, I just want to give you a heads up, and we need to do everything in writing, have everything upfront with this other agency. I agree, we want to work with them, but we don't want to get caught in that mess again.
Yeah, understood the question. You know, there are times where we're doing projects where utilities are relocated as part of the project. This is just to facilitate construction, because they have utilities that are old. So, this is a very standard way of operating. We're doing similar work with City of Redland, where they're putting their project through.
Right.
And we got the brine line, and we're paying them to put that portion of the brine line in. So, that, it's a little different than where a project such as Portero is moving forward, and as part of their, part of the construction contract, we have utility relocation. And then, it gets complicated, because it depends on what agency is doing, what work, and how that gets done. This is more straightforward. They have their water line services. They're going to come in, lower the services, they'll leave temporary on top of it, they will not pave it to city standards. They'll just leave the temporary pavement there and compact it back. We'll come back and take whatever surface is left, and then just go ahead and grind it down and overlay on top of it. So, I believe this should be a very smooth process.
I understand, I just want to give you a warning that there's still, not everyone's at the same point we are. I think that it's important that we work together. There's still some other agencies and other members of boards who aren't going to be as open and transparent as we are. So, just a warning.
I think it would be cleaner with the two separate contracts, though.
No, I agree. I agree. I agree.
No other questions? Then, I will make a recommendation that we award a construction contract agreement to Maitich Corporation for the Eighth Street resurfacing project, and approve not to exceed a 10% contingency.
I'll second that.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item 28, Highland Springs Avenue, Second Street Corridor, Highland Springs Unsignaled Left Turn Closure, and Second Street Unsignaled Left Turn Closure Traffic Analysis.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, as you are aware, there is a lot of traffic issues on Highland Springs Avenue, just by I-10 and south of thereof. A while back, we started looking at some of the intersections that are there. We had our traffic engineer do a study of eight intersections and one left turn movement, and the locations are basically, these are the list of the eight locations that we studied, and there's also a driveway or an entrance, left turn entrance into City of Banning, that was also considered part of the study. And the locations are here. Number one is on Highland Springs and First Street, and there's another one, Highland Springs and Second Street. Then, there were a couple of, three intersections by the freeway and Highland Springs. We also looked at the signal that's coming out of Paseo Beaumont, that's just west of Highland Springs Avenue, and also the signal that's on Commerce. In addition to that, we looked at the driveway, our driveway from Walmart turning onto Second Street, has some history of traffic accidents there, and this was a recommendation by Police Department to look at that, as well, Banning also, City of Banning also asked us to look at closing the left turn into the shopping center on the east side. There is a left, unprotected left turn as you come up, going south on Highland Springs Avenue, that has caused accidents in the past, and it's a difficult left turn to maneuver. So, today, and we looked at quite all of the signals, the one that kept coming up, the level of service D, was Paseo Beaumont and Highland Springs Avenue. So, tonight, I wanted to concentrate on just three items. The first one was the Paseo Beaumont and Highland Springs Avenue, because that seems to have a lot of issues with traffic. And then, the other one is a left turn into Banning, and the third one is a left turn out of Highland Springs. There is other stuff that needs, we're looking at some other issues with the rest of the signals. I'll talk about that as well towards the end of the report. But looking at this intersection, we have an intersection that's coming out of two parking lots, there's a city signified intersection there, very close to Highland Springs Avenue. The biggest issue we have was queuing of the cars or the vehicles as they were making a left turn from Second Street onto Highland Springs Avenue going north. That caused backup into the shopping centers, and that basically dropped the level of service down, almost at the AM, PM, and during the day to level of service D. So, we had the traffic engineer look at several options, closing some of the movements, and then redistributing the traffic in a way to improve the level of service. So, the first thing we looked at was, basically, what we have here is, we were taking away the left turn from the shopping center on the north, going towards Banning. So, the left turn was deleted. We do have right turns, and there was a through movement going to the bank parking lot. It didn't reduce level of service much, we changed the, the time saving was very little. We looked at, the other movement was separating out the two right turns on Second Street, and then keeping the through movement to the chase bank parking lot, and then again, eliminating the left turn. And the reason we eliminated the left turn is because if we do that, we can extend the parking, we can provide more storage for the left turn movement, which is the highest movement of that intersection, Highland Springs and Second Street, going north. And then, the last option that we looked at was to completely take away left turn or through movements at that intersection. So, basically, if you come out of the parking lot from the north, the only movement that can be made is to the right turn, right turn going towards Pennsylvania Avenue, going west. There is no left turn out of that shopping center. It eliminates quite a bit of movement, with the time that we save, we put into the other movement, so it allows for a better flow out of the parking lot, also allows for a better flow into the parking lot. The left turn from Second Street going into the parking lot remains, so it allows for traffic to go in there. It allows for us to extend two lanes, two left turn lanes from Highland Springs Avenue to Paseo Beaumont. It improves the efficiency quite a bit. It changes, basically drops the level of service from D to a B. You get 22 seconds per vehicle, saving, which is substantial. So, that would be something that we want to consider. To implement something like this requires a lot of work with the property owners, the businesses. So, if we did move forward with this, we would have several meetings with the property owners there, we would also involve the businesses that may be affected, talk to them, look at the issues, and then suggest a pilot program of 30 days or 60 days, and see if there is substantial improvements, and if they help. Now, it does help the businesses in the long run, because the more people you can get in and get out, the more people tend to come to the shopping center, because it is very difficult. I've been there at lunchtime and observed how the traffic flows, and it's very difficult to exit that shopping center. So, that keeps people from coming, because now they believe that there will be a lot of delays if they enter or leave the shopping center. So, that's one of the items. The other item is the, there's a left turn pocket, and you go south on Highland Springs Avenue, goes into the shopping center, that's in Banning. Banning, we've talked to the staff at Banning, and they are, they're in fact requesting that we close that, because that is a dangerous left turn. It is in the city of Beaumont, so therefore, we reviewed it as part of the study, and the analysis came back that it would help, it's unsafe, it should be closed, in fact helps traffic by directing traffic to the intersection, and not having that left turn that may cause accidents. There is visibility issues as well on that left turn. To do that, the suggestion is to temporarily barricade the entrances or the turns, and allow for the traffic to move, and then again, watch how that affects and see how that affects the businesses, and then come back and finally remove that portion, temporary portion there, and build in a curb and gutter and median there. The last item is a driveway out of Walmart. The left turn out of the Walmart going east causes issues with traffic. There's been several accidents at that location. Also, this all, again, this traffic is going towards that intersection that's already impacted. It doesn't take quite any, much longer to go around to west, and then come around on Second Street, a couple of lets, and end up on Highland Springs Avenue. So, our recommendation is to remove the, to remove the left turn going eastbound, and we, again, will put temporary barricades and do a directional left turn into the parking lot. So, you still can get into the parking lot, it's just when you get out, you can't go towards Banning, you have to go towards Beaumont. And then, you can go around and come back. If somebody wanted to go to Banning, either they can make a U-turn, or they can go on First Street and come back around Highland Springs Avenue. And so, those are the three, the intersection that we wanted to address today. But in addition to that, some of the things that we are looking at is the timing. We are also looking at the timing of the signals, along with Caltrans signals and the signals that are maintained by City of Banning. So, we're going to be making some minor changes to the timing. It does improve a little bit as far as the flow goes, but there is improvement as Banning is planning on the north of the freeway, that will substantially help this intersection. The other thing is, we're, we have, we are, we are going, we're looking to design Second Street going west all over Pennsylvania. So, when that happens, we believe some of the traffic that's going on Highland Springs would go toward Second Street, so that would alleviate some of the congestion that's here at that location. So, we do, we will bring some of those things back to you at a later date, but at this time, we are looking at just these three items. The other item we looked at very briefly, and it's in the report, was a roundabout at the, at Commerce and Second Street, but we're not, we don't have enough information to work on that later. We believe that the corridor between Highland Springs Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue on Second Street needs to be looked at, once we get the interchange done, once we get the widening done, and once the Second Street is punched through. So, we'll come back and look at what, where the signals should be, where the left turn should be, and how do we limit turn, turning movements, as we can see here, turning movements cause a lot of delays at some intersections, so the traffic will flow better. So, with that, this concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I got a question in here. You do?
Of course.
My concern actually is on the intersection six, on the Commerce way.
First, I'm sorry, do we have any public comment?
No requests.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Because I think we're downplaying that, and the report made it really down, that's where the turnabout proposed, which I'll never vote for, so don't think about it. But anyway, the, what I'm concerned about is, when you close the Walmart going eastbound, it's going to divert, okay, so if they come out, they'll go up, and then they'll make the lefts and come around. But we all know they're going to end up coming up Walmart and coming out, going by Farmer Boys up Commerce. So, my concern is there's no covered signal there, and I know that the signal, left signal would, you know, add to the burden of timing, but I've already seen quite a few problems there, and I've had a couple of residents bring it up to me, actually, a couple of weeks ago, which was kind of good timing with this, is they're concerned about that intersection, and that's before we even brought up the fact that Walmart's going to close there. So, if that's closed there, everybody's going to go up and go through that Commerce. So, my concern is you're having people turn left without a covered signal, you have people coming down now, and there's no protection there. And I don't know, I don't, in my view, I don't think this gave it justice, because it didn't anticipate that, because the study was done before that happened. There's no way they could have calculated the flow of that, because the flow hasn't increased yet, which you know is going to increase. But you had an 857 car count on a Wednesday, of all times.
And I believe your references to the Commerce and the driveway coming out of Walmart on the north side, on Commerce?
Well, my reference is to Second and Commerce, the north and southbound turns. So, if you're going on...
No, they're not protected turns?
They're not protected turns, right. That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay, no, that's a reasonable issue that we probably should look at. So, what we'll do is, we'll look at counts and see if the left turn signals are justified, and we can do that.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to bring to your attention, because according to the report, it seemed like it downplayed it, only because the counts were down, and that happened before we're closing that Walmart end, which you know, I can always guarantee that they have to go up, they can't go down.
So, if we do move forward with the Paseo Beaumont and this Walmart left turn closure, then we do want to relook at that signal, because now we're moving traffic on. I just didn't want to spend a lot of time looking at that, if this was something that we didn't do.
Okay.
So, it didn't really make sense to look at that intersection until we have additional, we've done this work. I can look at that and see how we, diverting of this traffic would affect that, and we can add a left turn.
Yeah, and that was my only concern, just to make sure I brought it out, to go back... Yeah, and that was my only concern, just to make sure I brought it out, to go back and look at it again. Okay, thank you.
I agree because during the holidays, it was terrible.
Oh, yeah, it's bad. It's going to get worse.
Yeah, good point.
My concern about that particular choice too is we are hoping to get more development directly across the street from that. So, if you close that, then you're also making it more difficult for the commercial development across the street from that. At some point, you may end up having to have a better choice there of a light or something if you end up with a larger commercial development there. So, and if it were my business, I wouldn't want to make it any less convenient for the people of Banning to shop there. So, I guess I would be very careful about wanting to close that when we're trying to develop the properties across the street and, I don't know.
So, the signal is programmed as part of the development at that location. So, when that does happen, we'll open it back up.
Okay.
So, the signal is, if the development happens to the south of it, then it does warrant a signal and then it becomes a fully signalized intersection. It's just that left turn is unsafe until we put that signal in.
Okay.
You have a second vote for no roundabout. So, unless one of those, unless one of those two.
Three.
Yeah, so, so I think I have a little different take on some of these. I think it's a slam dunk that you close that left turn into Walmart. It's just crazy and, you know, the people are going to end up, as you say, go down to Commerce to get out. I'm not real worried about the south side of the street because I think the plans can be designed so that there's more focus on coming and going from First Street, which seems to be, already have interchange and light, you know, light poles already set up there. But my concern, I'm really not, I don't want to be the one who's saying, close all those left turn lanes out of Paseo Beaumont. Because you're, what you're going to do is everyone is now going to have to go right and there are a lot of, a lot of cars coming out of there. So, all of those cars are going to be going right, they're going to be feeding into the Walmart people who do go right. And so, now everyone's going to be coming down to Commerce and right now, that's the only place you can do a U-turn. And I think, I think to think that people are going to turn left on Commerce, go all the way down to First Street, come back around to Highland Springs, that's not going to happen. Everyone's going to start doing U-turns at Commerce.
Commerce is not a U-turn. That's not a U-turn. So, it's not going down.
So, see, the, this, so.
You can't do, you can't, if I'm going east on Second Street, I can't do U-turn right in.
So, we would.
Let me make sure, Commerce is the road between Farmers and Wells Fargo?
Correct.
And I can't do a U-turn on Highland?
It's not, it's right right now. It's for heaven.
Oh, I do it all the time.
Chief.
No, I don't. I was joking, I don't. I don't. Well, I, yeah, I would rather you, I like the, I like Proposition One where at least you have at least one left-hand turn lane. I think it makes a lot of sense to move that median over that you're talking about to create three lines there. But the other, see, what's going to happen is, and I already do this, if I will avoid, if I can't get on a left turn to get onto Highland Springs and I'm in the Paseo Beaumont Shopping Center, I'm going to go out on Dorina Sinsel. I'm going to go out that way and I'm going to take a right, I'm going to come up to another interchange that does not allow me to do a U-turn and I don't ever do a U-turn at that interchange. And so, that means now I'm going to go out of, out of the parking lot, get on Highland Springs, go south on Highland Springs, turn left into Burger King, drive through the parking lot and come, and come back out by the Chevron gas station. And right now, a lot of people do that. And when we close, and I think it's a slam dunk that you close that left-hand turn into Banning. But I'm, what I'm suggesting is when you do that, it's, I think your study showed 170, 180 vehicles an entire day that would be affected by that. But if at the same time, you're telling people they have to go, they were going to go out of Paseo Beaumont, they have to go all the way down to Commerce, loop around to First Street, no, they're going to come out Highland Springs and loop through the parking lot in Banning. And I, I just think that's, that's crazy. Is there a U-turn down at First Street in Highland Springs?
So, what?
You can't do a U-turn there either.
No. So, what would my, and again, this is, this is, today is just presenting to the council?
No, I understand.
Getting your comments and going back and finding the study. Then, second step would be as we do this, talk to the property owners. One of the things we would have to do is once we decide that the traffic now is going to move east or west, then we have to look at how that traffic is going to be distributed. That was not something that we did as part of the study. So, we would have to do traffic, we have the traffic counts, we have to do a distribution showing where the turns will be made and then how we would accommodate. Now, we may end up putting a longer turn pocket on Commerce and on Second Street. So, that, that's.
Can you put in a U-turn on Second Street in Commerce?
We can if we did a protected left turn. So, that would be some of the things that we will look at is, as suggested earlier, to put in a protected left turn. If we did that, then we can put the, put the U-turn in. U-turn is unsafe the way it is right now because, you know, the, it's a, it's a, the left turn that people are just going straight through and you make a left turn on a green which is on, for the eastbound lanes.
But I think of all the things you're talking about here, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but if you close the left turn into the Banning Shopping Center, which I think it needs to be done, and you close this left turn from Highland into Walmart and you don't let people turn left out of Walmart either, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
You're not going to let them go in there left hand and you're not going to let them leave left hand. If you do those two things and instead of focusing on anything else, you extend Second Street all the way to Pennsylvania, you're not going to have, I don't think you're going to have that traffic problem. I think people are going to just go, I'll leave on Pennsylvania.
The left turn into Walmart will still be allowed, so we're just taking the left turn out, the one that's coming out.
I think the left turn in should be, I don't know why anyone has to go on that side of Walmart. Because if you're coming down, if you're, where would you be coming that would require you to go in the left turn there? Because if you're coming down Commerce and you're going to take a right to go down and do a left, it's easier to take, go straight through into Walmart and move. Why do you have to be at that end of Walmart is what I'm suggesting.
We can't take that out of it. It's not, it's not a movement that can't happen with the other, from the other side.
Right.
I mean, and what we could probably do is take both of them, see how it goes, and then if we need to put the left turn back in, we can put that back in. This is, the best way to do this type of program is to design what we think is going to work and then try it for a month, a month to see how it works. Because you, just what, you know, you've explained that this will cause people to change their habits.
Absolutely.
And then we have to now account for the traffic that's created by the change of people's habits. They're used to going, in one way, they find that that's no longer available, so they change their way of getting or getting in or out of the shopping center. So, I don't think this is set in concrete, I think this is where we come in.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to make the point that I think Second Street's the highest priority to extend Second Street to Pennsylvania. I know it's going to cost us some money to do it, but as you get, tell me if I'm wrong, but as you get businesses coming in on, into those lots, we can then charge them for what we've had to do to develop Second Street all the way through Pennsylvania, especially if you're widening Pennsylvania. But I just think that would, that would make a huge difference.
Out of comment, the, I agree about extending Second Street, that that should be a very expensive priority, but a real priority because I think it will resolve so many of the other traffic issues, so I'm in total agreement with that. My only concern is that when you ask the question, if you came out of Walmart and if you could, you know, take a right and if you could, you know, go to Pennsylvania to exit, you'd be much more likely to do that and I agree. But that's for a Beaumont resident. We still have to keep it, it's a regional store, it's not just a Beaumont store. So, we have to make sure that we keep the exit and entrance just as easy for a Banning customer as we do a Beaumont customer. And so, my concern over making sure that we don't make it cumbersome to go east is that I don't want to make it difficult either, I want to resolve traffic issues, but not make it so difficult that a Banning customer does not want to shop at Walmart because of traffic.
And that's, those are the things that we have to weigh against, the safety of making a left turn coming on the street and somebody getting hurt. So, we've looked at the traffic data and there are accidents and it's justified to close that left turn. But once again, this is not, you know, this is, this is not the final step. The final step would be making the improvements that we think that are permanent. The other thing is we believe the shopping center in, on the south side is going to move forward and then we'll get that signal in and we'll open that left turn back up. But I think it's, it's a good step to close at least the left turn into Walmart and then also the left turn into the shopping center in Banning. We'll send a letter, if that's the intent of the council, we'll send a letter to Banning informing that we will be working on closing that thing. On the Paseo Beaumont, I have additional things to work on. So, what I will do is I'll go back with the traffic engineer, we'll look at the traffic going west, we'll look at how that will affect the intersection on Commerce and Second Street. And before we move forward, we'll come back and talk to you. In the meantime, we may, we will go out and talk to the property owners that are there and get their feedback also. Because I think this will take two, three months to figure out what's the proper thing to do and what's the best way to approach that thing. But I think in the long run, the way I'm looking at it with that much time saving, it's justified to spend the effort in trying to come up with a solution that'll save 22 seconds per week. That's quite a bit of time savings and the level of service actually goes from D to a B. So, it serves the shopping center well to have an intersection that's fronting the property that allows for free movement into their shopping center. But I am, I'm taking notes on the, on the concerns of the traffic going west and then trying to make turns on Commerce and how do we address that. So, we'll do that as part of this project. I'll bring it back next couple of months and.
So, are you saying that you are, I guess I'm, I'm mixing up those two left turns at Walmart. So, are you saying now that you're going to close the left turn into Walmart but keep the left turn out of Walmart still?
The other way around. Closing the left turn out of Walmart, we're keeping the left turn in the Walmart.
Okay, that's what I thought you said originally, I just thought I heard it differently just now.
Yeah. Apologize if I mixed that up.
No problem.
Omar, real, real quickly, Sonic, when they come in and stuff, are they fitting into First when they come into the pad next to the CHP or how are they going to be exiting and entering?
I don't, I don't remember their primary entrance. I believe it was on Second.
Kyle knows, I think, right?
It's Kyle.
We have ingress, egress on all three. So, there's a left turn in on Second Street, right out, and right in, right out, need the left in on First.
Okay.
Right in, right out on Highland Springs.
Oh.
This is the primary entrance is on Second.
Okay.
So, we didn't have any confusion over closing the left turn in, on Highland Springs into the Albertson Shopping Center. That's going to be closed, correct?
Yes, that will be closed.
And then we ended up with, you want to close the left turn going into Walmart if you're driving east from the west, you want to close the left turn into Walmart, but you are going to keep the left turn out of Walmart.
Opposite of that, we're going to keep the left turn going into Walmart and close the one that exits Walmart Shopping Center.
Furthermost eastern drive approach right now allows full movements.
Right.
Say, right in, right out.
Okay. And.
So, they will go down to Commerce and go up to First Street? Is that, that's their only way out then?
If you're traveling east on Second, on the southbound side, you can go left.
Or Commerce.
Yeah. And I believe most of the people coming out of Walmart would just go to Commerce on the north side of it and they'll just make a left turn and go on. So, it doesn't really impact too much the flow of traffic. Somebody is from Banning, they don't have to go track all around four intersections, get back there. All they have to do is go to the shopping center on the west side and they can get out. So, it's, it's, but it is safety concerning, it has caused several accidents.
And to throw another concern in, I don't know whether, how much you can do this inside the parking lot, but if you are coming or going from El Pollo Loco, I don't know what that, if that street even has a name at this point, it is, it is very scary. Coming out of the McDonald's, the El Pollo Loco and either going across that street to get up to Home Depot, turning right right there is a mess. It is. And once, once we start funneling everyone from Walmart to go on Commerce, that's going to be even crazier. And I don't know how many times I've cursed the old council members and finance, or, and administrators for allowing that mess to be there. Maybe, maybe we can address that at this point.
Yes, we didn't, we didn't go for, we didn't look at the intersections going.
Inside the parking lot.
Inside the parking lot going west primarily for two reasons because if we, if we're working on the east end, then if we fix that, then it creates movements that we're not accounting for now.
Right.
And it complicates the, so if we fix west end, which doesn't have a lot of issues and then come back to east end, then we may have issues that we should have probably taken care of.
Sure.
So, once we get through this, especially the Paseo Beaumont intersection, I think there is a lot of stuff that will be going along the way, trying to figure that out. There's, the other thing is there's only one lane on Commerce going north and south and it's already impacted as it is. And providing additional turns into that parking lot, into the, into the Second Street is really needed. So, we also look at, we may have to look at another entrance onto Second Street west of Commerce.
And then that issue I just brought up would also be relieved greatly if Second Street goes all the way through to Pennsylvania.
That is correct. Because the people go.
People would not need to go right to get onto Commerce, they would go left and come out that way. So, I know, I know it's a big expanse, but I really think doing that with Second Street is, is the biggest bang for the buck that we could get.
On the CIP, it is part of the expansion of, or the Pennsylvania widening, Second Street is an incidental project to that. We are soliciting proposals at this point. So, you'll see that coming forward, the design of that and we're looking on funding, how we're going to fund at least one lane in each direction and do some improvements in the channel there. So, we're looking to do that as, when the Second, Pennsylvania widening gets done, we should be in line to get that.
If you do that, I along with anyone else on this side of Beaumont will probably never use Highland Springs to come or go ever again. And so, you know, that solves the Highland Springs problem, I think significantly, but.
Until the two years of widening, it's over.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
But yeah, in the long run.
I'll make a motion to accept the traffic assessment, analysis and recommendations for one, Highland Springs, Second Street corridor traffic analysis, two, Highland Springs unsignalized left turn closure, and three, Second Street and unsignalized left turn closure, left turn from Walmart parking lot, and two, direct staff to implement traffic engineering recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Proto Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item 29, wastewater treatment plant expansion renovation project and brine pipeline installation project update.
Honorable mayor and council member, as you recall, the city had until the end of last year, December 31st, to submit finance plan and final drawings for the expansion of the treatment plant and the brine line to the board, to the regional board. We just want to inform you that we did submit that. This item is a receivable file, we just wanted to go over what we have done so far, what were the items that were presented to the board and what are the next steps moving forward with this project. So, Brian from Bevan Society is here to go over, over both the brine line and the expansion project and as well as the finance plan that we submitted to the board. At the end of the presentation, I'll be here, answer any questions if you may have.
With that, I'll be, Brian starting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Carroll, I'm the city council. It's good to be with you again. As Omar said, we just want to give a quick update as to what we've been doing, milestones that have been in front of us and kind of what's, where we're at in the process. So as Omar said, the, the last submitted deadline milestone that we had was at the end of the year 2017 for the final design of the treatment plant and, and brine line. So just want to walk through what was submitted to the regional board and where we're at. So with the brine line, it's broken up into two segments from, what we're calling Reach One is from the wastewater treatment plant to the county line. Reach Two is from the county line down to into San Bernardino where the connection will be with the Inland Empire Brine Line. So what was submitted on those, Reach One, there was 77 sheets of, of plans, about 360 some sheets of, or pages of specifications and documents for Reach Two, 63 sheets of design plans and then its associated specifications. So that was submitted on time on the 29th to the regional board, hand delivered to them. What we're doing on that continuing is coordination with all the cities along the route, count, the two counties and then regulatory permitting agencies along the alignment. Those discussions are ongoing, making sure we have their permit requirements and all the things that they're going to want and need in our, in the contract documents before we go to bid. We're also meeting with them regarding plan check fees, inspection fees as we go through their jurisdictions. So those are ongoing discussions. And then we'll be addressing comments that we get back from the regional board, if any, and from, from staff and then addressing comments and concerns as we go and, and have meetings with the different agencies along the alignment. Next part, for the Inland Empire Brine Line and Orange County Sanitation District Treatment, we're waiting, you guys will recall you approved the, to move forward with purchasing the brine line capacity and treatment. So we've been working with DFA, who's the holder of that capacity, and we're awaiting draft contracts from them for, for that purchase. I know in speaking to them, they're working on some inter-agency coordination. Because the brine line capacity, although it's owned by DFA, it has to be bought and sold through the member agencies of SAPA. So there's a transfer that has to take place between them and then we need to move that capacity discharged into a different portion of the brine line. So there's some inter-agency coordination that has to happen between Western Municipal, San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District to make sure that that transfer happens. So some of that's going on. We continue to coordinate with SAPA regarding the permit to discharge to the Inland Empire Brine Line and get permission through SAPA and OCSD to do that. Some of the big milestones in order to get that permission, one was the pre-treatment ordinance and enforcement policy that you guys approved back in November. The last piece of that pre-treatment policy and ordinance is the new local limits, which is, if you'll recall, where we've established what is normal discharge for homes and for businesses and industrial dischargers. So that will be coming forward and gets adopted into the pre-treatment program once, once that's established by city council and adopted by city council. The reason they're separate is that you don't want to have to, the local limits gets updated on a somewhat frequent basis. You don't want to have to re-adopt the ordinance every time. And so the adopt, the local limits is incorporated into the policy by adoption separate so that if you need to update the local limits, you can just re-update the local limits and not go through the procedure of updating the, the pre-treatment ordinance. On that front as well, the city has issued four discharge permits to your, you have four categorical industrial users within the city. The city staff has issued permits to them regulating their discharge, which is one of the things that SAPA and OCSD wanted to see as far as, you know, control of what's being discharged to your, to your sewer and then therefore could end up in the brine line. So that's all, all positive and moving forward. On the wastewater treatment plant, the, the final design was submitted same time on the 29th to the regional board, 382 sheets of design plans, almost 1,300 pages of specifications submitted to them. We'll be waiting for their comments, any comments that they have, staff has, and then we'll be working towards finalizing those documents, getting them ready for bidding. So and we continue to have coordination as you guys remember, you approved contracts with the major equipment suppliers. So that process is ongoing. So the design is a little bit in flux as we get more information from those manufacturers about the specifics of what they'll be providing. And so we continue to coordinate with them on, on that, on the major equipment. One of the other pieces that was due to the regional board is this financing plan. That was submitted on the 29th as well. And what that covered was what options the city is, is considering and looking at for financing. So the capital financing options that were included in that plan and are being explored, Clean Water SRF through the state, I-Bank, which is a similar organization to the SRF program, little different caps on how much funding is available for project, and then bonds, and then a public-private partnership. So those are all the ones that were, were presented and are being explored and, and worked towards. Repayment mechanisms, developer impact fees for new connections and then sewer rates for the, for the payback security on those financing options. The regional board's requirement was to submit this plan by the end of the year and then have funding secured by July of 2018 of this year, which is the same deadline for going to bid on the brine line and the treatment plant for construction. So that's the next milestone that's upcoming. Kind of ancillary to all this and important, but not included in one of the, specifically in one of the requirements and milestones by the regional board is, is SEQA. So the SEQA public comment period will begin this week. So the document will be out for public review. And then as part of the SEQA and environmental process, we're continuing to meet with the regulatory permitting agencies, the Riverside RCA, doing joint project review with them, going through MSHCP compliance, all the regulatory issues. So continue to have ongoing meetings and discussions with them to make sure we get approvals where required and make sure we're all ready to go by summer to get these things built. I was going to bring the documents, but I figured I would save myself. So I took a picture of them.
[laughing]
The pain and suffering of, of all of these documents. So that's what, that's what this is. This is what was delivered to the regional board. And they were so grateful. We got a nice email from them saying thank you that when they got back from their holiday vacation, this giant box of documents was sitting on Mr. Person's desk for him to review. He was so happy to see that when he got back. On the recycled waterfront, some things that have been happening, we've had a handful of, of meetings, I would say good productive conversations with Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District about the project and about the opportunity for use of recycled water. And we've been having discussions with them and then also with the regional board on that front. There is a RFP out for consultant services to look at recycled water use analysis. So that will be forthcoming. We did receive it today via email from Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District, a letter of intent to take the recycled water, receive the recycled water when it becomes available, which was an important step as we go through the SRF funding process and applications. They want to know that there's a, that there's a taker, a consumer for the recycled water once it becomes available. So we've got that. That will be submitted to the state as well. So one thing that I wanted to hit on really quick is, as part of that, there's been some discussions in the past about, there's some, there's some improvements that could be made to your existing plant to make the recycled water available sooner than waiting until the whole project is done. We've had some discussions with Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District about that. They've indicated that they probably have about 12 months of work on their site to do to get ready to receive the water, mostly in the permitting side of things, to make sure their sites are permitted and, and ready to use. So given that information and where we are, if we stay on track with, with bidding and construction of the, of your wastewater planning improvements and upgrade, to, to separate those projects out and do them separately would probably not make a lot of sense. But what we could do, we've talked to Omar and staff about this, is we could make those early completion items as part of the expansion upgrade project to accelerate those and put those as contract requirements for the contractor to say, you have to complete, you know, these tasks in the first six or eight months of construction and be able to try to accelerate the, the use of recycled water. So we're going to have some ongoing discussions with the water district about that and see, try to make those things mesh the timeline and not, you know, do anything that would cause unnecessary expense, but make sure that we try to, as expeditiously as possible, make sure recycled water is, is available. So good productive conversations, I think, on, on that front. With that, that's really it, an update. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, move closer to going home.
[laughing]
I second that. I'm, it wasn't a motion, was it?
Do we have any public comments?
No requests.
Okay.
Just a really quick comment. I'm glad that you reached out to Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District and appreciate the efforts on your, our side to, to work with them jointly. And I think it's a great idea to move those items up in cooperation with Beaumont Cherry Valley. So thank you for that effort.
Yeah.
Questions?
I too am encouraged by that last bit of information. Thank you.
It's, I mean, from my perspective, we've made a lot of progress in the last, you know, little while about the cooperation and trying to figure out how to do it and the timeline to do it. So-
I'm happy to hear that they're starting the permit process. I always wondered why, what, what were they waiting for?
Yeah, I, just one comment on that, as we've talked to Mr. Jaggers about that, you know, they didn't want to spend, kind of like we've talked about, they didn't want to spend money because the permits only have a certain shelf life. Once they do their surveys for the recycled water sites, if too much time lapses, then it's no good anymore. So until they, there is more of a date certain when recycled water would be available, it doesn't make sense for them to go do the permitting of their sites. So on both sides, there's kind of a chicken and an egg.
Right.
And so hopefully we're trying to put the, put that together and have it be coordinated so that it's, it makes sense for both sides, the producer and the receiver, and nobody's spending money unnecessarily.
Now, I understand that we're going to do a recycled water study. I guess we're getting an RFP on that. Should we be coordinating with the golf courses for the same permitting process so that they're ready to, I mean, are we, do we need to wait and see what the recycled water study tells us? I would, I think it's, I mean, I think they're expecting to be included in recycled water.
I think, I think there's two key issues on that. One is the cash flow side because, you know, we've got under the current rate, the ability to fund the sewer plant expansion to six MGD. So we're looking at the potential rate adjustments to be able to fund the backside of it, which is to get to the Title 22 and their reuse water. But I think the other issue to think about is there's very limited storage capacity right now within the Beaumont Cherry Valley water system. So if we invest money into even the use of irrigation for that water, there's only certain times of the year where they're really going to use it. It's going to continue to go downstream. So, yeah, I just want to make sure because some may hear this and think, oh, we're just going to go out there and start producing water and we've got users for it in the next 12 months. And we may, we may not, but there's, there's other operational issues. And I would recommend that we do that analysis to determine the best system to deploy, the best operationally, the best logistics systems so that we're making better use of those dollars. You know, I hate for us to jump out there, invest a lot of money, only turn around and say, well, you know, here's a different option or this is a better utilization of those, of that resource. Because I think looking at this solely as an irrigation resource is not contemplating the best use of this. I think there's a duality of purpose behind this water. It can help supplement our water supply. It also can provide an untreated raw water supply that can be used directly for irrigation. But those are some conversations we're going to have with the district as we look through the feasibility of all this and where we put our dollars.
But I'm also really encouraged, we're having the conversations with the, the district and with Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District on, on this and bringing them along in a more proactive way, more of a team approach, much better. So, good.
One thing to kind of tear off of what Todd has indicated is that right now, you still have that requirement, even when we're all done, to deliver 1.8 million gallons a day to Cooper's Creek. Your plant's currently treating about 3.3 million gallons. So there's not three or four million gallons a day currently that's even potential recycled water. That will continue to grow as the city grows because that 1.8 is fixed. And so everything above that will continue to grow and be opportunities for recycled water. I think that's where we get into what's the highest and best use of that water. You know, so just to continue an ongoing discussion.
Thank you. This is receivable file. So thank you very much. Item 31, approval of certain attorney invoices.
And I'm going to recuse myself on this item since it involves my law firm. Step out of the-
This is two attorney invoices. For March, December, 2017, in the amount of $45,861.97.
Still moved? Sorry.
That's good. I'll second it.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Legislative updates and discussion. Do we have any items for discussion?
I did not bring any.
On legislative updates?
I did not bring any.
Okay. A council report. Councilmember White?
I think, I don't know if we need to have a agenda item for this, but Nicole recently sent out an email to, we've been invited for a representative to attend the Syroptimus Club. And that's for this Saturday at noon. If no one else was intending to go, I'll be happy to volunteer to go. But I think we need to, because you've gotten a number of these. I've seen just recently a number of invites. And sort of holding to what I had promised earlier last year, we need to have a process that we're represented at each one of these. So, you know, not something where a message goes out to all of us and we hope one of the other ones will, will, will volunteer to go. So I think you're doing a proclamation for it and we need someone there to present it. So if no one else was already intending to go, I'll, I'll go for that one. But I'm thinking maybe you could bring to us a list of, of these kinds of invites to help us keep on track so that we're always sending someone and we'll take, we'll be, you know, we'll fairly take turns going to the ones we don't want to go to.
I can. The only delay I may see in our issue is may- The only delay I may see in our issue, I may see in that is sometimes their very last minute when I receive them, like this. But I will try to do that.
Yeah, okay.
And raise a flag if we're, we don't want to have where none of us show up at. We had one event that we made a mistake and everyone must have had conflicts, and we just didn't realize that, so.
So, maybe if you follow up with, we didn't, you haven't gotten an R S V P from any one of us yet, could someone do it? So, and then the other thing is, sort of again, I don't know if this is a future agenda item, so I'm going to address it here, and if it is a future agenda item, we can deal with that. The Tracy Mahoney spoke about the, what we've done on Oak Valley for two lanes. And I was a big proponent of doing two lanes both ways, and I still am. But I think she brought up some good points as far as safety for their side of the street, and I think we should review, you know, some of the suggestions, and we should also, I think it should be an agenda item so that those homeowners could come in and put in their two cents. I didn't, I had not heard and I would recommend against a bike lane on that side of the street, but I didn't know that that, she said it as if it was.
You already have bike lane, you have a bike lane on each side.
Right, but we could turn the bike lane into parking. I don't think it's a parking problem on the other side of the street. And there's no homes on the other side of the street.
You got a commercial, you got the church on that side.
Yeah, there's no homes on that side where people would need to park on the street. So, I think we ought to look at that and maybe do it as an agenda item so that she and her neighbors can come back and give us some input on that. I still think it's, it doesn't make any sense to do Oak Valley with just one lane either way.
Well, and that was also specified to be a four-lane thoroughfare presented to our top program.
That's what, yeah.
Settlement agreement with W R C O C also.
Yeah, but I, you know, I thought about that, I didn't see too many people parking on that street. I still felt with cars parked on the street, even when we didn't have it striped with two lanes, people were driving as if there were two lanes there. So, I think there's got to be a way to make it fit. Maybe instead of a bike lane, we make it a little bit wider and call it a parking lane. I don't know, but.
You can park in a bike road.
Oh, you can, okay.
You're not a bike lane.
Okay. Okay, I think there's, I think we should look at opening, you know, providing more space on that side if we can. And that's the end of my report.
Councilmember Laura?
I have nothing to report this time. Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Protan Martinez?
Just a few things. I attended the League of Cities meeting on Monday. We're giving a little update on issues affecting local municipalities. I attended the E D C meeting on Wednesday. We're giving a thorough update from the San Gregorio Water, Pass Water Agency, and the committee discussed future tasks that will present to the council that they'll be working on. The RCA discussed land acquisition and fee collection and, as well as the manager's report. And lastly, the featured species of the month. You can drumroll if you want, but Mariposa Lily. A Mariposa Lily, very important.
Has a nice ring to it.
Yes, and they're pretty, too.
I think you should be bringing us pictures of these different.
PowerPoint perhaps.
Well, I can read your live version, but I don't know what'll do with the newt, but that's.
Kind of like the bird of the month.
There you go. Expect so.
Thank you.
Be careful with bird of the month. That's all, thank you, man.
I attended the employee appreciation luncheon. I did it last year, and I did it this year. Both years, I've just always astounded with how many employees that we have that have put in so many years for the city. I didn't write down the numbers this year, but I think we had like nineteen employees that had over ten years. Is that correct, Todd, or do you remember?
Yeah, we recognize twenty-nine total employees. And yes, there's about, yeah, nineteen, about half of those were.
I think it was nineteen. It was incredible. We also had a nice group of brand-new employees that were sworn in to the positions that we've filled that have been empty as we cut back on services and things that we were doing, so that was good. We got new police officers. We, I mean, it was just a wonderful spread of different employees. And it's just really good to see the camaraderie of the employees, too, as the members get up to get their awards, and it really is like a family, and that part is especially nice. So, I'm actually honored to be able to attend and to watch the employees and how they, how proud they are of each other. And so, that was really great. I considered that to be quite a highlight, actually. The, I'm going to the W R C O C transportation seminar tomorrow in Marino Valley, and I'll bring some of that information back for the rest of the council that may or may not be attending. This week is a T Now meeting. The students that are doing the work for the T Now group that have been meeting with them for a period of time, they're hoping to be at the T Now meeting this week as the last part of their project where they're working, doing the work for the T Now group as their client and learning how to treat clients in a project and going through all the steps for that, so that will be their final presentation to their client this week on Thursday, and then they will be bringing it to the T Now annual meeting on the 26th of this month. So, they'll go to the luncheon, they'll bring their robotics and part of their centerpiece, and there's four of the students that will be attending that. So, it's nice to see the efforts of the students woven in with the public transportation group. And it's going to be quite different for R T A to see the students show up and have them be caretakers and developers of their project, and it's going to be shared by the Chair of T Now in a presentation, how they worked through it and got to know what public transportation meant in the past as part of their project, so. And after all is said and done, we'll bring them into council so you can all meet them. So, that's it. That's all I have to say. City Treasurer report?
Okay, the evening, council. First thing I want to point out is the report that I distributed to all of you has the wrong date on it. We met on the 8th of January. The first thing on our agenda was the appointment of a vice chair, and due to the low attendance, we are continuing this item to our next meeting. And then Milana presented the Finance Department Policies and Procedures Manual, which we reviewed and recommended to come to city council for approval. Excuse me, I'm having a little voice problems here. Interval, I'm sorry, that's a little typo there. And then Milana presented the Internal Control Findings and Software Update. She gave us a live presentation on how the software implementations that have been made by the city will improve the internal control. And these areas covered were purchase orders, which are fully integrated with transit, public works, public safety, having the right to initiate requisitions, and all other departments must request the Finance Department to initiate a requisition. The cash receipts, they're using the N Code nine right now, and the N Code ten has not been scheduled yet for implementation. The accounts payable is working smoothly. And then the business licenses, the permits and deposits, and the developer impact fees, the inter gov implementation targeted for 2000, I'm sorry, February 15. The general ledger, the Tyler N Code ten is up to date as of December of 2016. The S C O finding status update, accounting for fixed assets and inventory is due to be completed by the end of January. The Finance Department Policies and Procedures Manual to be presented to the city council, which was tonight. And the timely bank reconciliations, all accounts are up to date, general ledger is reconciled weekly, all other accounts monthly except L A F, which is reconciled quarterly. And then future agenda at this point is just the appointment of a vice chair.
Thank you. We have any questions? I'd like to, city clerk report?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. City attorney?
I have nothing this evening.
City manager report?
What everybody's been waiting for, I'm sure. Highlight of the evening. One thing, I don't know if y'all caught it, Amr made a brilliant presentation on the Eighth Street Project, and he did say it was going to be a smooth project, so looking forward to that, wherever you are. And I guess we will have to scrap the honorary mayoral traffic circle program, the plan was to build one and name one for each of you and all future mayors moving forward, so. Yeah, I guess we won't put that on the next agenda like we were talking about. On a less serious note, we do have on Monday, January 22nd at 6:00 P. M., the first community meeting where we want to talk about the Prop 218 hearing. So, that'll be here. We're going to try to go ahead, and if we're not pulling out with too many people, try to have it in here so we can televise, so if people want to tune in or they can come back and later watch it. But I think a lot of Ms. Kimball's questions, you know, we'll respond to her directly, but her questions are some of the key issues that we'll also be talking about when we do that presentation. So, why are we doing the plant? We've got, you know, mandates and orders to address that, to be able to meet those issues. How are we paying for it? What have pass fees done? What does the new fee increase need? What is it funding? All those types of things are things that we'll plan to address with that.
What date it ends up?
That's Monday at 6:00 P. M. on January the 22nd. So, that's six days from today.
And what are your, Mr. Pinkerton, what are your recommendations about council members attending or not attending?
It's a, it's going to be a public meeting that, you know, the public's going to be invited to, so if you're just attending to observe, I don't see a problem with it.
Council won't be presenting the workshop or anything like that. We would just be in the audience if we showed up.
Correct.
Okay.
What's the time on that again, please?
6:00 P. M. 6:00 P. M. till whenever, however long, however many questions we have. It was very interesting, the timing is very interesting, because I've just been reading up on the Mariposa Lily. There's been a lot of desire to elevate that as an endangered species, so much so they're considering rebranding it. So, there's a couple names we're looking at. They either want to call it the Charger Lily or the Raider Lily, since a playoff appearance is so rare. So, so.
It's very smooth of you.
It is under consideration. So, that's all I have for you this evening.
E D C manager.
How about the last place, Denver Bronco Lily?
When's that last Super Bowl Chargers one? I'm trying to remember.
Oh, we almost made it Saints Lily, so.
When the Saints go marching out, right?
Other items, is that it? Okay, thank you.
That's it. I've got more, but I'll spare you.
That's okay. Future agenda items, we did get the one suggestion from councilmember White. Do we have any other suggestions that need to be brought up? No? Okay. With that, I will adjourn the city council meeting at 9:37.
That was close.
You were close.